Okay, we're live on YouTube.
Good morning and welcome to the April 12th, 2022 Public Hearing and Public Meeting of the Landmarks Preservation Commission. We will begin by taking attendance. Mark, will you call the roll?
Chair Carol.
Here.
Vice Chair Bland.
Here.
Commissioner Shamir Baron.
Here.
Commissioner Chapin.
Here.
Commissioner Chen.
Yeah.
Commissioner Davensher. Commissioner Goldblum.
Here.
Commissioner Gustafson.
Here.
Commissioner Jefferson.
Here.
Commissioner Luthfi. Commissioner Holford Smith.
Here.
Good morning again and welcome to the April 12th Public Hearing and Public Meeting of the Landmarks Preservation Commission. This meeting and hearing are being held via Zoom and livestreamed on our YouTube channel. So if you would like to testify on any of the public hearing items, you may do so by joining the Zoom meeting at the estimated time shown on our agenda, which can be found on our website. And if you would just like to watch the proceedings, you may do so on our YouTube channel. And we'll begin this morning with our public meeting agenda, which are items that have already had a public hearing and for which we've already heard testimony and the commissioners have given comments and the applicants are back today with revisions in response to those comments. And then we will move to our public hearing agenda to review new applications for work on designated properties. And with that, I will turn it over to Corey Harala, our Director of Preservation.
Thank you, Sarah, and good morning, everyone. We'll start today's Preservation Department Agenda with Public Meeting Item Number One, LPC 22-05216, an application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Brooklyn, block 386, lot 32, 184A Bergen Street in the Borum Hill Historic District. This is a modified late Italianate-style row house built 1873 to 1874. And the application is to construct rooftop and rear yard additions and alter the rear facade. This was last presented at the public hearing of April 5th, 2022. No action was taken at that time. I believe the staff will do a brief intro before turning it over to the applicant for the presentation after we open the proceedings.
Okay, thank you, Corey. And let's open the proceedings now so that can be done seamlessly. So Commissioner, oh, Commissioner Luthfi has joined us. Commissioner Luthfi, would you make a motion to open the proceedings?
Moved.
Thank you. And Commissioner Chapin, would you second that motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, so the applicants may speak after the staff introduces the project.
Good morning, Commissioners, Dina Posner, Preservation Staff. Ruben, if you could please just move to the first comparison slide. Thank you. As Corey noted, this proposal was last heard at the public hearing of April 5th, 2022. An axon metric showing the previous proposal is in the upper left-hand corner of the slide. At the hearing, all commissioners were supportive of the rear yard addition as presented. However, however, several commissioners had concerns regarding the visibility of the proposed occupiable rooftop addition. Some commissioners expressed openness to a bulkhead instead of an occupiable addition. There were also concerns regarding the proposed enlarged door opening at the visible rear facade. The applicant has made revisions in response to these comments and is here to present their updated proposal. So Ruben, you can go ahead and unmute yourself and state your name for the record and you can begin. Ruben, you're muted.
Okay, sorry. All my controls are not visible. Good morning, I'm Ruben Jackson from Arkham Muse, the architect for the proposed renovation at 184A Bergen Street. I'm presenting again on behalf of Doug and Jordan, the owners of the property who are also here with us today. We appreciate the commissioners taking the time again this morning to review the proposed changes to our renovation that we've made in response to our meeting last week. To quickly remind everyone of the existing conditions and context, this slide shows the historic photos of the building, the primary facade as it stands today. Next slide shows the existing conditions of the rear of the house. And the next shows additional context in the backyard. Slide five shows the block plan and the two gaps, one on Bond and one on Wyckoff, which create minimal view corridors to the rear facade of 184A Bergen. Slide six, again, this is an axon drawing of the house as it exists in the lower left. The renovation is proposed last week above that and the revised proposal on the right and larger. To respond to the commissioner and community feedback, we've completely removed the rooftop extension, replaced it with a bulkhead for stair access to the roof. We've eliminated approximately 175 square feet of space on the rooftop or roughly 80%. The rooftop space inside is no longer occupiable. We've offset the bulkhead from the back of the building as much as possible to reduce visibility from the gaps on Bond and Wyckoff. Also, on the second floor, as Dina noted, we've removed the, we have removed the French doors and are proposing a single door in a lowered existing window opening at the second floor. This slide seven shows the elevation from Bergen Street. Neighbor's active chimney at 184A Bergen on the west side or the right will be raised in accordance with building codes to be three feet above the bulkhead. Just a reminder, as an elevation, this would, this view would never be seen from the public areas and the flue extension is not visible from the street, as you'll see later in the slides. Slide eight shows the existing rear elevation. And the next shows the proposed rear elevation. The elevation shows the rear addition and bulkhead. Note the change made to the door opening on the second floor. Next slide 10 shows some samples of materials as we planned to see, as well as a bird's eye view rendering in color to give better sense as to what the renovation will look like. So this slide shows the revised plan on the roof, which removes the penthouse entirely and replaces it with a bulkhead as discussed prior. Note that the interior ceiling height of the bulkhead is proposed to be eight feet. This slide just shows the mock-up we constructed in preparation for the meeting. We used most of the framing from the old mock-up and changed the orange mesh netting to outline the bulkhead contours and the revised fencing. This slide shows the visibility from Bergen Street from the farther perspectives. Given that we are no longer raising chimney flues on the east side of the house, there is no longer any visibility from Bergen. And again, 14, this slide shows more views from Bergen more closely closer to the house and you can see there is no visibility of the flues. The next few slides show the view from Bond Street. This first view is the existing maximum point of visibility on the back of 184 Bergen. A small vacant lot being used for parking allows a view of 184A's rear facade, as you see in the photo, between the four-story apartment building to the left and the white rear facade of 186 Bergen to the right. There's a lot to see from this vantage point. Your eyes are drawn to the four-story apartment building on the left and a thousand-foot Brooklyn Tower and other skyscrapers of downtown Brooklyn to the right and above the houses. This slide shows the same view of the original rendering proposed of the rooftop extension last week. And 17 shows the view with the revised proposal of a bulkhead. You'll note the eyes are still drawn to the much more prominent buildings in the foreground. The visibility of the bulkhead represents significantly less massing than the original rooftop addition. In terms of visibility from the street, it will be comparable to a chimney, mechanical unit, or other common rooftop feature. Slide 18 shows the photo montage with a revised mock-up to illustrate how limited the vantage point is. Slide 19 shows the original rooftop extensions rendering from Wyckoff Street through the, through the other gap in the block plan. And slide 20 shows the revised proposal of the bulkhead. There are trees obscuring this view again. So to show what the bulkhead would look like, we've shown a blown-up illustration of the rooftop extension in the lower right. You'll note the theoretically visibility, visibility from Wyckoff has been significantly diminished even, even with the blow up. We have concluded another photo progression montage of the actual mock-up to show how limited this vantage point is as well. Trees are starting to bloom, so it really is not visible at all, but we have highlighted where it would theoretically be visible from only a very limited vantage point. And with that, we conclude our presentation and hand it over to the commissioners to ask any questions.
Thank you. Commissioners, do we have any questions? Right, I don't see any questions, so we may be able to begin our discussion. And we have not received any written comments on the revised proposal. All right, so I am unmuting, you were requesting to unmute all of you so we can begin our discussion. And so we had, this was, as you recall, this was just last week and we had a very robust discussion about rooftop additions and appropriateness under the criteria on which we, in which we evaluate rooftop additions and visibility, scale, the materials and details of what you see and how you see it in the context and how it reads within its context. And as was presented, we were sort of mixed on opinions and there were some of us who were comfortable with it, some of us who wanted to see a less visible addition and some who didn't want to see an addition here at all. And so the applicant has revised the proposal to make it less visible. And, and again, these two viewpoints are very limited. If you walk one, you know, five steps one way or the other way, the, the line of sight is obscured again by adjacent buildings or buildings on the streetscape. So this is sort of the primary view, I think, that's really left. The other view is very obscured at this point. So we'll begin our discussion and, you know, as you know, I was supportive of the addition because I really feel that even as it was proposed last time, the size and visibility was consistent with other additions we've approved throughout the city and row house and brownstone districts and, but did feel that the fins could be removed as they called attention to the addition in the streetscape. And Commissioner Bland, I think you also were comfortable with this the last time. And now that they've revised it to make it smaller, I would think that your comments would be similar, but why don't you go ahead?
Well, they're very similar. In a way, I'm sorry that they had to reduce it, but I understand. To get the votes we need, they did, and I think it's fine. It was, to me, fine before. Appropriate and certainly it's appropriate still.
Okay, all right. And Commissioner Luthfi, I think you also, you were completely comfortable with the rear yard addition, but I think did ask them to look at doing a single door above the addition and also asked them to look at eliminating the fins to simplify the rooftop addition.
Yeah, I was, yes, I was positive about the project overall, except for those things. I think they did a great job on the, the back, you know, putting the door, reducing it to a single door and putting it within the confines of the window brick frame and, you know, I'm fine with the bulkhead.
Okay, all right, thank you. And I'm going to jump around. I'm going to start with those who were comfortable with it, if it would be less visible. So Commissioner Holford Smith, I think last time you also commented on the fins, calling attention to the addition, but indicated that you would support an addition that was less visible. So is this in the realm of, of appropriate for you?
Yes, I think this is very successful. Looks like a standard rooftop stair bulkhead and I think it's appropriate as is.
Okay, thank you. And Commissioner Chapin, I think you also felt that you could support something if it was less visible from these views.
I, I had a concern about this being the first rooftop addition and also it's designed to an extent. And I, although I wanted, I understood the need for more space, I felt that the space being constructed might not be so essential to the program as other additions that were being made. I think this is, I, I'm very satisfied with this. I don't think that the bulkhead is an issue at all, that I, that I can support without any problem. So I'm, I'm fine with this and with the design of the rear, which I also think is fine and any visibility is, is also okay. So just as presented, it's fine with me.
Okay, great, thank you. And I think Commissioner Gustafson, you definitely expressed a preference to not see it, but said that you, I think, might be open to seeing something that would be less visible. So how are you feeling at this point?
Yeah, I, I think this is not merely a tweak, this is a dramatic change and and, and I think it's, it's fine as is. I would note, it's, it's, it's shocking that they team turned this thing around in seven days and with the dramatic changes. And I think that's, that's incredibly impressive and whatever the formula is for that secret sauce, they need to share that with other architects and teams here.
Okay, thanks. Okay, and Commissioner Shamir Baron, I think you were concerned about having any visibility because you couldn't see other additions from these views within this block. And I don't know if the change to a bulkhead changes that for you.
Yes, I think the visibility of a bulkhead is appropriate as is.
Okay, great. And Commissioner Goldblum, I think you philosophically had a concern about an addition on this block, regardless of visibility because of the, the limited number of other additions. But we did note that the commission did approve another addition and could approve additions that were not visible within this block irrespective of the context. And I don't know if a bulkhead changes that for you, but why don't you go ahead?
It does. I think bulkhead is appropriate. And I think the other details that they've changed are also appropriate.
Great. Okay, and Commissioner Chen, I think you were also either, I think you were wanting to see something less visible.
Yeah, I agree with the rest of the commissioner that the applicant made a vast improvement over the last proposal. And I agree with Commissioner Gustafson, I want the secret sauce as well.
Okay, all right. And Commissioner Jefferson, you were not here last week, but I think you've seen where we were and where it's ended up. So how are you feeling?
I can support this proposal.
Okay, all right. So I think that the magic sauce worked and we have a consensus to approve. So why don't I go ahead and, and make that motion in the matter of docket number 22, sorry. One. The matter of docket number 22-05216, 184A Bergen Street in the Borum Hill Historic District, a modified late Italianate-style row house built in 1873 to 1874. This is an application to construct rooftop and rear yard additions and alter the rear facade. And I note that the building's style, scale, materials, and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Borum Hill Historic District and recommend approval finding that the proposed work will not eliminate or damage any significant architectural features, that the proposed rooftop bulkhead will be modest in size and setback from the front and rear facades and the rear yard addition will not rise to the full height of the building thereby retaining a sense of the building's original scale and massing, that the scale of the rear yard addition will be in keeping with historic additions such as tea porches and houses of this age and style and with existing modern additions within the block, that the rear yard addition will not project further into the rear yard than other, than the addition at the adjacent house. And within this deep lot, its size will not overwhelm the neighboring properties or detract from the central green space, that the rear yard addition will be in keeping with the, with the character of the surrounding secondary facades in terms of its simple massing, solid-to-void ratio, materials, finishes, and level of ornamentation, that the modified opening and door providing access to the roof of the rear yard addition will be compatible with the overall scale and pattern of openings and fenestration of the upper floors, that the bulkhead and raised chimney flue will be simply designed and typical in terms of materials and finishes, that the raised chimney flue will be the minimum height required by building code and that the work will only be visible from public thoroughfares at a distance in incidental views within the context of secondary facades. And Commissioner Bland, would you second that motion?
Second.
Mark, will you call the vote?
Chair Carol.
Aye.
Commissioner Bland.
Aye.
Commissioner Shamir Baron.
Aye.
Commissioner Chapin.
Aye.
Commissioner Chen.
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum.
Aye.
Commissioner Gustafson.
Aye.
Commissioner Jefferson.
Aye.
Commissioner Luthfi.
Aye.
Commissioner Holford Smith.
Aye.
With ten in favor, the motion passes.
That's approved, thank you. And we'll move to the next public meeting item.
The next public meeting item is number two, LPC 22-01806, an application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Manhattan, block 644, lot 64, 69 Ganswort Street and Ganswort Market Historic District. This is a 19th century building altered in the modern style by George H. Seuss in 1949. The application is to construct a rooftop addition. This was last presented at the public hearing of October 26, 2021, and no action was taken at that time. I will need to open the proceedings to turn it over to the applicant to present their revised proposal.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Shamir Baron, would you make a motion to open the proceedings?
Still moved.
Thank you. And Commissioner Gustafson, would you second that motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the applicant may present.
Good morning, Commissioners. Ward Dennis with Higgins Quaysbarth and Partners. I'm joined by Jonathan Taylor from my office and Alexandra Dedunis from Bromley Calvery Architects. The, the public meeting item, this is 69 Ganswort, the R&amp;L, former R&amp;L restaurant and remembered by most of us as the former home of Florent Restaurant located on Ganswort Street in the Ganswort Historic District. The building was constructed in 1949 in the Art Modern style. You can see it here in its context within the district of taller and lower buildings on the triangular block born by Ganswort, Little West 12th and Washington Street. As you may recall, this was, this was presented in October of last year. The history of the site included a three-story wood frame building that was constructed sometime before 1950 and a rear four-story brick building, both used as tenements and restaurant at the front. Did that go? Yep. In 1949, the three-story wood frame building was taken down and this one-story restaurant was constructed in the Art Modern style. And the four-story rear building was cut down to two stories. This is very similar to what we see happening throughout the district in the 1940s and 1950s as buildings are being cut down. We also see this happening to the building immediately to our west, which is now a three-story building historically, four stories. You can see the two-story rear building still sticking up over the restaurant here on the left. And this is a view of that two-story, that second-story piece from the roof of 69 Ganswort, looking north at the top right here, and then the rear of the two-story building from the neighboring property looking to the south on the bottom right. The context of this block does include a lot of buildings that have been cut down over time. The odd street angles and the like create these many views into the center of the block with other rooftop additions that have been approved previously. In our previous proposal, we took this history of the site and, and the history of the block and proposed a two-story addition on top of the existing second story using this sort of ghost abstraction of a historic building in order of, I'm sorry, using the ghost abstraction. The comments from the commissioners, I think we, it was interesting, we heard a range of comments on some points. I think we had unanimity on a few points, though. One was that an addition on this building could be appropriate. However, the height of the addition should not exceed the height of the neighboring buildings either to the right or the left. And you can see that our fourth story here is substantially above the neighboring building to the right. Some commissioners thought that we should bring an addition forward, some thought we should push it back. I think there was very, if not unanimity, most commissioners felt that the addition should not compete with the existing building, the R&amp;L restaurant below, and should be more understated. Some commissioners suggested using materials and colors that related more closely to the Art Modern building or creating a more direct dialogue with the Art Modern style. We took all of those comments into mind and, in particular, starting with the comment to keep the height below the adjacent building. And that really led us to determine that an addition going up above the existing second story didn't make sense, particularly if it was going to be pushed back further and the like. So what we are now proposing is an extension of the existing second story, bringing it forward by about 29 feet and cladding it in an aluminum panel system. It is, the, the paneling is a Rayno bond system, which does have a metallic finish. You can see that the organization of the extension above the restaurant now matches very closely to the organization of the restaurant below with the very narrow side piers and the fascia on top and the large opening in the center with doors and windows. And then here is another view from the side. Do note that there is this small extension on our neighboring building with a staircase that goes up, so there is a gap between our building and the neighboring building at this location. And here is a section showing the previous proposal with the two-story addition on top of the existing second story and bringing that second story out further here. We've now eliminated the addition entirely and are simply bringing the second story forward. It is about seven and a half feet back from the front of the existing parapet. And you can see here that we have kept the parapet at a lower height, actually lower than the height of the existing building to the rear. And we did that so that we would not wind up with a, with a very large parapet over the front of the building. We have held back the railings, cable railing system painted. We've held that back a further seven feet to minimize the visibility of that piece. And then here is a section through. Ceiling height remains the same as existing, eight feet six throughout. Here is the, this is the line of the existing second story and we are bringing it forward, as I said, about 29 feet, so that it is seven and a half feet back from the front facade of the building. And then here are just a couple of views of the existing, the existing second story rear building is visible and will of course be visible now, but certainly less so than what was proposed previously and obviously significantly lower than either of the adjacent buildings. And again, the design of the addition is trying, you know, certainly not calling attention to itself, but also relating in a contemporary way to the organization of the building below and to the materials. And then this is just a detail showing front view with the materials noted. The railing system will be a painted metal cable rail system. If you look at the, the R&amp;L restaurant, the former Florent, it really is a, a very simple building of its time. It's, it's a brick building with a stainless- uh, stainless steel, uh, storefront system, uh, very well done, but still very simple. And we have again matched that in terms of the organization of the facade above. Uh, and in looking at the materials, this is, I think, uh, the one disadvantage of Zoom is that I can't uh, hold this up and pass it around the table for you. Uh, but as I said, it's a Rayno bond system. It is a MICA finish, so it is a metallic finish. Uh, but it is a very matte metallic finish. Uh, and if you look at the photo on the right, this is the sample down here. Um, the stainless steel, there's actually a variety of stainless steel and aluminum finishes on the facade. So we have the shinier stainless steel that has, uh, these sort of vertical pieces and the more matte stainless steel here at the base and here at the fascia. And then the signage of the R and L restaurant is an aluminum, uh, mil-finished aluminum. And that's probably what is closest to the Rayno bond finish. So uh, we think that the finish is appropriate. It's a little bit more matte. It's not a shiny finish, so it's not going to be overly reflective or call attention to itself in that way. Uh, it is, uh, you know, as part of the overall design intended to be recessive uh, and not competing with the R and L, uh, slash Florent restaurant below. Uh, hey, these are some details of the window and the cladding system. The cladding system will come up over the top of the parapet. Uh, the windows will be painted a off-white, uh, finish, um, which will give it a slight contrast with, uh, the metallic panels, uh, but again, not stand out, uh, but not be too uniform, I guess is, is the right way to put it. Um, existing plans showing the setback now at about thirty-five feet for the second story and then bringing that forward to seven and a half feet off the front of the parapet. Uh, mechanical equipment will be at the back of the roof, so will not be visible. Um, front elevation, I think we've looked at, uh, enough. I can come back to some of these if you have questions. Uh, do note for the rear elevation, we're now proposing no changes. Uh, fenestration remains the same. It will be, uh, uh, it, it will remain a brick, uh, rear wall. On the sidewall where we have, on the west side where we have that stair coming up on the neighboring building, we will return the aluminum cladding around to the side as far back as that stair. And then the rest of the facade and the side elevation is not exposed at all. Uh, and the east side elevation is not exposed either, except at the rear of the existing, to remain. Uh, I'm gonna skip forward a little bit through these sections. Uh, I just want to get to a couple of views at the very end. Uh, this is a view, uh, looking east from the corner of Washington and Gansfort. Uh, previous proposal, uh, with the two-story above the existing two-story and of course coming up above, uh, both, the height of both neighbors. Uh, the reduced height now, uh, eliminating all addition. It's only a forward extension of the existing second story will be visible roughly from this corner of Washington, uh, to a little bit to the east of the building. Uh, you can see on this final view, by the time we get further down the block to the east, uh, the new extension is not visible at all. Previously, the two-story addition was visible over our neighbor sixty-seven Gansfort Street. Uh, so I will end it there and welcome your questions and comments and thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, do we have any questions? I don't see any questions. I think the presentation was very clear and thorough. Um, I will note for the record that, um, Village Preservation did send written comments on the revised proposal um, with, uh, explaining they have concerns with the, uh, material on the addition. So, um, if there are no other questions, Commissioners, I'm gonna start to unmute you so we can begin our discussion. And, um, as Ward presented this, um, when it was originally shown to us, the commission, Commissioners present were comfortable with a, an addition, uh, and even a, a larger addition um, on this particular building, given the building's history and evolution and then the fact that in this particular historic district, the streetscapes are really characterized by a lot of alterations that happened during the various historic waves of reuse and adaptive use of these buildings as, um, changes went from residential to, as buildings went from residential to commercial to industrial to market, uh, uses. And so the commission itself has a history of approving change based on that historic character of the district and, uh, most notably the visible additions. And so I think, uh, the commission was open to an addition here and I think somewhat intrigued by the ghost approach to the design, but I think really struggled with then, you know, what do you do with it if it's, uh, if it's sort of a ghost of the previous floors? Should it, it should probably be lower? Then does it get pulled forward? Does it get set back? Are there aspects of the design that change? And I think, um, there, you know, it was, uh, we had a very interesting discussion and I think, um, ultimately not one single direction on a kind of how to fulfill the design intent here. So, um, the applicants have sort of changed course and are now proposing a one-story, well, extending the existing one-story addition, the second floor forward and doing it in a simpler design, um, that is more recessive. So we'll begin our discussion. Commissioner Goldblum, do you want to start this one?
Sure. Um, well, it's, I think it's, I think it's appropriate as drawn. I think that, um, it's definitely recessive. It definitely does not really change the impression that the restaurant makes on the streetscape. Um, you know, that varied profile of the block is retained. I think that the choice of material is acceptable also. Uh, I, I personally think that that, the, the horizontal joint that kind of runs very, very graphically through the center panel might, might be, uh, something that they could work on with staff. I'm, I'm gonna, I think it kind of announces it as metal panel as opposed to kind of making it more of a quiet presence, but I, I think I can, I could support it as is.
Okay, thank you. All right, Commissioner Chen?
Uh, I think this is interesting. Um, um, the, uh, the fact that the, uh, took it to, uh, reduce it further from last time and make it a recess, I think the, uh, the, uh, I agree with Michael Goldblum. It, it is acceptable, but I do agree with the comment that I think the, uh, some of the materials, um, uh, is, is, uh, for me personally, uh, may require a little bit more further study, I, I think, especially along the signage, but that's just my personal view.
Okay. Commissioner Bland?
Um, this makes me sad. It's a strategic retreat, which I think, um, firstly, it just went way too far. Um, the, the initial concept was right to me. If, if too large, too high, um, and I'm sad, saddened to see it so diminished and changed. Um, you know, it seems like particularly in this district, uh, some really robust so-called rooftop additions have expressed themselves. And I think it should have here. Um, that said, I can't say that it's inappropriate to be so, um, recessive. Um, so I can't vote against it. I'm just saddened that, um, somehow we've, I guess our actions have, uh, cow, cowed the applicant to such a degree that, um, we, we see this. Um, I'm sure that's not an opinion held by every other commissioner. Um, but it is my opinion. Uh, that said, I think the, um, I guess it's like in a Leuko bond or something like that, the material. If that's true, it's a very, I think, an cheap sort of material and maybe since so little of it is gonna be had, maybe the applicant can be, or, um, staff could work with the applicant to come up with a a better, a better or a material that we can understand a little bit better. Maybe we don't fully understand it. As Ward said, he can't pass it around. Um, in any event, I have said what I, I think, but I do think that a little bit more work needs to be done on the material itself.
Okay, but are you comfortable with the idea of it being a different material than the brick and something that does relate to the metal elements?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. It should be a metal element, I think. That's right.
I must say, Commissioner Fred Bland is very on the point, just like last hearing. Uh, well said and, and very, very articulate.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Lutfi?
Um, well, uh, other than the, um, comments about working with step on the materiality, there's really nothing to complain about here. I appreciate Fred's comments and I have to say, the, the applicant was more than responsive. I mean, I wasn't actually expecting such an, I'm gonna say, you know, understated response. I think it's a good response. Um, it's simple. Um, it's set back in a way that it doesn't compete with the facade i- in a way, and it pays homage to what was there, uh, for, for, I would say, all of us his, historically, as this was an important place and I, uh, I, I, the, uh, it's funny, the signage on the restaurant, I think, is, is very important in terms of its expressiveness. Um, and, uh, I think the fact that there's no competition here and, and that, that the materials attempt to speak to it, uh, is, uh, a, a good, a good move. So I can, I can approve this, uh, along with the, sharing the comment that the applicant worked with staff on the materiality.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Jefferson?
Um, I, 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 since you're gonna make a regressive, a recessive building, why not go all the way and make it completely recessive? So from, uh, and quiet. And if that's the case, then the addition facade should be quieter so that the front, the front facade become dominant. And that would be, this would fit in perfectly, i- if that's the concept.
So do you mean in its details or its finish?
It is finished, the color. It should be a little bit darker, so it's, it's not as dominant from the frontal view.
Okay. Commissioner Gustafson?
Uh, it's, I think it's appropriate as is with, uh, the, subject to the, uh, comments on materials.
Commissioner Holford Smith?
Uh, Shamir? Baron? Oh, sorry. Did I say, I thought I, did I say Commissioner Holford Smith? Sorry, I meant, and I was reading your name too, because I have your name already written. Okay, uh, so I, I, I don't know that I was at the last hearing for this, but I think that what, um, there's a bit of a miss and I think I might have, I might agree with Commissioner Bland in part on this. Um, it, the, what was interesting, uh, uh, sort of about what was, what had previously existed and what, and what the last proposal, um, eh, eh, sort of extended or, or continued, w- was the depth of the sort of back building, how far back it was from the street. And w- m- my problem with the previous proposal was not that it was too tall, um, but eh, the material. Uh, I thought that it, I think, I, had I been there or if I was there and forgot, have forgotten, I would have wanted for it to be, um, a brick material, sort of recessive in, in, in materiality, but um, could have been taller because it was so far back. Uh, I, I kind of think that what they've, they're proposing right now is, is sort of very, it's just strange to me. Um, it neither sort of continues or abides by that depth, um, of setback. Um, and, and it kind of calls some kind of attention to a relationship with the front, uh, with the existing street facade, which again undermines that thing about the kind of the depth, this, the separation of the back building of the top, top building from the front facade. And then it does it in a way that's kind of off, because I don't think this material, Rayno bond, is, has anything to do with stainless steel. You know, stainless steel and from that particular historic moment has to do with this kind of s- sanitary supposedly, um, m- 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 material that, that would have been appropriate for the meat market where you think you want to be able to wash things off, clean things off and for things to not be corrupted, you know, and, and, um, and, and where dirt could come off easily. So, and where the material itself would not rust. So there are a lot of things here that don't really make sense to me. I agree with, um, Commissioner Jefferson's comment as well, that there's a certain kind of, it's, the, the, the material is competing or is drawing too much attention. So what am I saying? So I think I would have preferred the taller building setback in a brick. I think that, or, or in something that was really very quiet. I think in this case, since they have reduced the height, I can't entirely argue with it, but I don't think that this material is appropriate. I think it should be, um, a, a, a brick. So, um, I think, I, I guess, so do I think that this proposal is appropriate as presented? Not quite, no.
Okay. All right, Commissioner Holford Smith?
Yes, I think, I think, you know, I, I was also a little surprised to see how much reduced it was in the, in the second, um, iteration of this addition. Um, again, I think that's not inappropriate. Um, I'm listening to everyone's comments about the material. I've been thinking about it and I think the Rayno bond, um, it's just a, such a flat, modern material. Um, I don't, I don't think that is appropriate. Um, and the more I'm thinking about it, the more I think that maybe it should be a brick. Um, just to really, to be really recessive and not to try to compete with the stainless steel, as Adia was saying. Um, I think, I think any metal will, will compete with the stainless steel storefront. So maybe a brick or maybe a stucco.
Okay. All right, sorry, I'm just taking one last look at my notes here. Um, so it's interesting, we've had, um, a lot of thoughts about material and, um, on the, uh, you know, I too was sort of thought that previous proposal was interesting and sort of had the potential to add to the kind of dynamic, um, and sort of interesting, uh, oh, Diana Chapin, I'm so sorry. How did I miss you? Please, go ahead.
Uh, thank you, sir. Uh, I, I actually find this acceptable. The, uh, I was also surprised that it had been greatly reduced, but I think it, uh, it presents as a appropriate addition to this kind of modern building. And I think that, uh, they could work with the staff on a metal mater- material that appeared more compatible with the existing building. But I could, with that condition, I could certainly, uh, a, approve it. And I do not think that it has to be brick. I think that because it's an addition to this existing building and it's a modern building, I think that in this case, that's appropriate.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, and that is where I was going as well. I think it was, um, you know, an interesting idea. This one I see more as a recessive setback, um, addition. That is also like many of the additions we've approved in this district and, um, and I will say that the approach generally in this district for additions has been to do something of a lighter material than the, the brick one-story or two-story buildings, which they're being added. So I think, um, I also could be comfortable with the metal. So I think we have six to vote it out with a metal-like material with the condition that they continue to work with the staff on the, um, material, including the finish and the joints and details. So Commissioner Goldblum, would you make that motion and then we'll see where we are with the vote?
Hey. Uh, regarding sixty-nine Gansford Street in the Gansford Market Historic District, a nineteenth century building altered in modern style, um, by George H. Seuss in nineteen forty-nine, applications to construct a rooftop addition, I'd note- applications to construct rooftop addition, I note that the Gansford Market Historic District is characterized by waves of adaptive reuse that significantly changed the appearance of many of the buildings and resulted in alterations in building heights and provided greater visibility of rooftop features, and that since the district's designation in two thousand and three, buildings have continued to adapt and now represent varied uses, such as retail, restaurants, galleries, and offices. I recommend approval. With, uh, I bring on approval, finding that the proposed work will not eliminate or damage any significant architectural features of the building, that the surrounding streetscape has a variety of building types and heights, which supports the presence of visible rooftop addition. That simple form in one-story height of proposed rooftop addition setback from the Gansford Street facade will be subservient to the historic building and will not overwhelm the facade, that the materials and design of the proposed addition, featuring aluminum composite panel, cladding with a matte gray finish, will harmonize with art-modern features in the ground-floor storefront and utilitarian metal feature, features historically found throughout the historic district. That the proposed bulkhead and parapet railings will be only moderately visible, seen in conjunction with the taller background, the taller background buildings, and will be in keeping with the typical utilitarian rooftop appreciations found throughout the district. And that the proposed work will not detract from special architectural or historic features of the building, streetscape, or Gansford Market Historic District. However, the applicant will work with staff on the materiality and detailing of the front facade of the addition and explore alternates to the metal, alternate finishes or materials to the metal.
Okay, thank you. And Commissioner Chen, would you second that motion?
Second.
And Mark, will you call the vote?
Derek Carroll?
Aye.
Commissioner Bland?
Aye.
Commissioner Shamir Barron?
Aye.
Commissioner Chapin?
Aye.
Commissioner Chen?
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum?
Aye.
Commissioner Gustafson?
Aye.
Commissioner Jefferson?
Aye.
Commissioner Lutfi?
Aye.
Commissioner Holford Smith?
Aye.
With ten in favor and none opposed, the motion passes.
Okay, so that's approved, so please continue to work with the staff on refining the material and the cladding at that addition, and we'll move to the next item.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Next item is Public Meeting Item Number Three, LPC twenty-dash-zero-two-six-four-two. An application for a certificate of appropriateness in the Borough of Manhattan, Block thirteen-eighty-seven, Lot forty-nine, thirty-eight East Seventy-third Street in the Upper East Side Historic District. This is a neo-Grec Queen Anne-style house designed by Charles Brecken Company and built in eighteen eighty-six, eighty-seven. And the application is to legalize the construction of a rear yard addition without LPC permits. This was last presented at the public hearing of October nineteenth, twenty-twenty-one, and no action was taken at that time. The staff will walk us through the revised proposal.
Good morning, Commissioners. Abby Harlback Preservation Staff. This application is to legalize the construction of a rear yard addition and greenhouse performed without Landmarks Preservation Commission permits at thirty-eight East Seventy-third Street, uh, which is located here on the south side of East Seventy-third Street between Madison and Park Avenues in the historic, in the Upper East Side Historic District. As Corey mentioned, the application was originally heard in October of last year, and at that hearing, excuse me, the Commissioners' presence expressed concerns about the lack of documentation of the existing conditions and requested that additional photos be provided to show the existing conditions. So the applicant has now provided those additional photos. Um, and first, I will quickly recap the proposal and what was presented previously. So the first few slides here are just photos of the front facade um, from the street and showing that the rear yard addition is not visible from, from any public thoroughfares, even, even through this gap in the street wall. Oops, excuse me. The photos, H-I-N-J, um, show the existing conditions of the rear yard and the additions from above. Uh, this next slide shows the block plan. So this is our property here. And you can see that the one-story portion of the addition extends to the rear lot line. You will also note that the block contains a, a variety of accretions that extend to the rear lot line. This next slide shows, uh, in Axon, the previous conditions here. And now the existing conditions, uh, which is proposed to be legalized. So as you can see, the building featured a historic L, which partially remains, and the addition to be legalized is this one-story basement extension to the rear lot line. And this additional greenhouse at the parlor floor level adjacent to the L here. So here are some photos of the rear facade, and you can see, um, the upper portion of the L above the greenhouse, uh, which remains as is. There's another photo looking up at the, at the rear. These next few drawings, excuse me, are of the addition, and you will note that they show that the addition was stucco-clad, which is an error. Um, the newly provided photographs document the actual existing conditions, showing that the addition is brick. So I'm gonna move forward here, and here are some of the additional photos. So it, again, it's a tight, it's a tight view from the rear here, but as you can see from these, from the parapets of the neighboring buildings, looking down at the building, you can see that the, the addition is actually brick. And here's the greenhouse here from the, from the west side. And now, in this photo, you're standing on the roof of the addition, looking at the greenhouse, and then, of course, the rear L here. And then this is, um, on the, on the east side, looking down at the brick from, from this building, and then from the neighboring building, um, looking at the addition here. So, uh, with that, the applicant is available to answer any questions, if you have any.
Okay, thank you, Abby. Commissioners, do we have any questions? I don't see any questions. I think the last time we saw this, we just, we, we had a lot of questions. We didn't understand exactly what the context was and the history, so Abby, thank you for presenting that so clearly. Um, I do want to just note for the record that we received a letter from the Friends of the Upper East Side Historic Districts um, recommending denial of the application. Um, it's unpermitted. So, um, I think if there are no questions, we can go to our discussion, but I do want to give the applicant a chance to speak or say any final comments before we move to our discussion. Although I, actually, I don't see him. Abby, is he here?
He is, but would you need to open the hearing for him to?
I'd have to open the proceedings, right, so I, I guess I just want to give him the opportunity. If he doesn't have anything to add, that's fine.
David, could you unmute yourself?
Or just raise your hand if there's anything you want to add. I can't, I don't see him at all.
Okay.
All right, wait, no, David, just, do you, is there anything you need to add, or you want to?
No, I can answer questions. There's nothing additional to say.
All right. Okay, so we do have one question, so let me go ahead and open the, we're gonna, I'm gonna unmute all of you so we can open the proceedings. So Commissioner Chapin, would you make a motion to open the proceedings?
Uh, so I'll vote.
And Commissioner Chen, would you second that motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, um, Commissioner Holford Smith, please go ahead.
Just a simple question, do we know when this was built? Like, how long has it been there?
Uh, I, I believe it's been there for about maybe fifteen years.
And that includes the, the first floor brick extension and the greenhouse?
That's right, that's right.
Okay. Thank you, that was it.
Okay. All right, so I think we can begin our discussion. So this is, you know, this is a kind of a longstanding condition that the applicant is, I guess it came to his attention that it wasn't permitted at DOB, so, or by LPC, so he is, um, seeking to rectify that. Um, and Abby laid out the context here. This is, um, a very dense block with varied buildings. This, um, building was once part of a row, none of the rest of the row remains. And at, at a second end of the block, where there are also a number of other full lot extensions, which are quite common, um, on buildings that are coming off of Madison Avenue and um, the sort of the commercial thoroughfares. So, um, it's, it's a dense area with other full lot, one-story rear yard extensions, and, um, we'll be discussing that as well as the greenhouse. And we'll begin our discussion. Commissioner Lutfi, would you like to start this one?
Sure. Um, I, I don't have that much to say. Uh, gi- given how long it's been, uh, up there, it sounds like the applicant discovered that it, it wasn't approved. I don't know if, uh, the applicant is, you know, was involved in its original development, but I think if this came to us, before us today, I wouldn't approve it. Um, because it's, uh, not visible and, um, and because it's not visible and it fits within the context, I guess I can approve it.
Okay, thanks. And I also would note that the side of the greenhouse that faces the neighbor has, uh, not a glass wall. I guess it's this basic reunit wall. Um, so I think that also helps to sort of contain that greenhouse within its own yard. Uh, Commissioner Jefferson?
Um, if this, if this came up today, I could approve it, but I could not approve it with the barnacles on the back and the mechanical systems. Um, I would never approve that. So if, for me to approve this, all the mechanical systems should be removed and placed in some location. Um, is, uh, we would never approve something like that today.
Uh, Mike, can I say some, uh, my client would agree.
No, no, David, no. So I just, I do want to turn to Corey though, because I think the split system units on the rear facade of the L actually would meet the rules for a staff-level approval. Is that right?
Uh, absolutely. The staff-level rules do allow for wall-mounted, uh, mechanical units, as well as things like ducts and flues. Uh, certainly where they're not visible, even in cases when they're minimally visible, uh, provided that they're attached at mortar joints and have small penetrations where necessary, but really underpinned by being, uh, mechanical units subject to change over time and, and reversible, and, and again, in this case, not visible from anywhere.
But, well, I, I did not know that. I did not know those detail, but, um, I'm on the fence here.
Okay. Okay, let's go around and we'll see where we are. Commissioner Gustafson?
Yeah, I, in, in, in light of how enclosed this space is and how non-visible, uh, this is, and, um, um, I would have, if this had come up, I would have, uh, found it to be appropriate. I would note that it is an excellent example of, um, how easy this might have been for this applicant if, if, if the, uh, whether it's them or the previous owner had come to us in the first instance, uh, um, you know, this would have gone like butter instead of being, uh, um, such a hassle for them. But, uh, we are where we are, and I think it's appropriate as is.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Shamir Barron?
Yes, uh, I, I think I agree with Commissioner Gustafson. It's, um, it's, I, I suppose we might have, but in any event, there is this kind of, um, it almost seems like it's been there for, sort of, you know, and it, not because it's fifteen years, but because it's, 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 it, no one, sort of, no one gains from it. It seems so, so kind of, not, okay, I, I'm not being clear, but it's, it's, it, it, it doesn't seem to take advantage of the block in a way, or the, or the, or the rear in a way that's, um, that's extravagant or sort of takes too much. It's, um, there's something kind of strange and modest about it, so that's not very clear, but I think it's appropriate, and I can approve it.
Okay. Commissioner Holford Smith?
I agree. I think, given that this tight little corner of this, um, these backyards that, that this, as Adia said, doesn't take away from anything, and I think we probably would have approved it had it come to us originally, so I can find it appropriate.
Okay. Commissioner Chapin?
Yeah, I agree with the comments of other Commissioners about the visibility. Uh, it's, uh, that it's modest, and I, I do think that in the context, we would have approached something very similar if it had been presented to us, so I can approve it as presented.
Okay. Commissioner Goldblum?
Um, I, I too can approve it as presented, but I too share, uh, Everardo's concern about those units, and it might be worthwhile to look at that regulation to, uh, sharpen it to some degree. It, it, it's, I think it's okay to have fans or things of that nature that can be mechanical things that are, uh, attached to or visible on the rear facades, but air conditioning units like that, I, I don't, I, I just think that they're, um, not appropriate in historic districts irrespective of their visibility. I think they can go on roofs. But I, it's got nothing to do with this particular application in this.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Chen?
Yeah, I agree. In the context, uh, and given the history and this, uh, you know, lack of visibility, so to speak, uh, I agree with the rest of the Commissioners.
Okay. Commissioner Bland?
Yep, it's all been said. It's appropriate even if fifteen years later.
Okay. Okay, so I think we can go ahead and make a motion on this one. Commissioner Lutfi, would you read the motion?
Sure. Um, in the matter, in the matter of docket, uh, twenty-dash-zero-two-six-four-two, uh, thirty-eight East Seventy-third Street, Upper East Side Historic District, a neo-Grec Queen Anne-style house designed by Charles Brecken and Company and built in eighteen eighty-six, eighty-seven. The application is to legalize the construction of a rear yard addition without Landmarks Preservation Commission permits. I note that the building's style, skin, materials, and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Upper East Side Historic District. I recommend approval finding that the addition is not visible from any public thoroughfare, that the work did not eliminate or damage any significant architectural features, that the addition does not rise to the full height of the building by maintaining a sense of the building's original scale and massing, that the brick cladding at the basement level and the greenhouse at the first floor are typical in terms of materials and placement and do not detract from the character of the rear of this row house or the neighboring buildings, and that this row house is the only extent building of a historic row situated on a varied block of row houses and large apartment buildings, many of which have large extensions into the rear yard. Therefore, the construction of a full lot coverage, one-story rear addition surmounted by a small greenhouse does not detract from the adjoining properties nor diminish the unity of a row or significant central green space.
Right, and Commissioner Holford Smith, would you second that motion?
I second it.
Mark, will you call the vote?
Derek Carroll?
Aye.
Commissioner Bland?
Aye.
Commissioner Shamir Barron?
Aye.
Commissioner Chapin?
Aye.
Commissioner Chen?
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum?
Aye.
Commissioner Gustafson?
Aye.
Commissioner Jefferson?
Aye.
Commissioner Lutfi?
Aye.
Commissioner Holford Smith?
Aye.
With ten in favor and none opposed, the motion passes.
That's approved, thank you, and we'll move to the next item.
Thank you.
Next public meeting item is number four, LPC twenty-one-dash-zero-four-two-four-seven. An application for a certificate of appropriateness in the Borough of Staten Island, Block eight-ninety-one, lots ninety-nine and ninety-three. Ninety-one West Entry Road, the Ernest Flags, uh, Toad Hill Cottages, Bocot Individual Landmark. This is an empty lot subdivided from the original lot, occupied by a cottage designed by Ernest Flag and built in nineteen eighteen. The application is to construct a new house. This was last presented at the public hearing of eleven, uh, sorry, November sixteenth, twenty-twenty-one, and no action was taken at that time. The staff will do a brief introduction before turning it over to the applicant to present the revised proposal.
Okay, great. And we'll, we'll just open up the proceedings now so we can transition seamlessly after you introduce it. So, um, Commissioner Bland, would you make a motion to open the proceedings? So Commissioner Bland, would you make a motion to open the proceedings?
So moved.
And Commissioner Chen, would you second that motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, all right. So the applicant may speak after the staff presents, and I also want to note for the record that Commissioner Gustafson is recused on this item. Go ahead Caroline.
All right. Good morning Commissioners. Caroline Kane Levy from the Preservation Staff. At the November sixteenth, twenty twenty one, public hearing and meeting, the commissioners reviewed the application for a single family house on an open lot that was previously subdivided from the Bocot Individual Landmark Site. Bocot is a stone cottage designed by Ernest Flag. Most commissioners were generally generally supportive of constructing a building on this lot, provided that the house design was sensitive to the individual landmark building and well-sighted on the property. However, commissioners felt that the building mass needed to be reduced and the relationship of the house to the site and the existing topography needed to be re-studied to further press the house into the land. The commission also felt that while the applicant did a good job incorporating elements of typical flag cottages into the proposed house, the facade designs were too complex and should be simplified and refined, particularly at the south facade which faces Bocot. Finally, the commissioners requested that the applicant consider the use of natural materials that are more commonly found throughout the flags houses at siding, roofing and windows in lieu of the proposed substitute materials. Tim Boyland, the architect, is here to present the proposed changes. Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you Caroline. Okay. The initial hearing documents are listed as an appendix, beginning on slide thirty three if someone is looking for that background. So the updated presentation represents a significant modification in response to the recommendations that we heard. The slide deck illustrates how the building design has been simplified. Massing has been simplified and the overall height reduced. The revised designs illustrate the use of natural fieldstone throughout the property, including the building facade and the and the walls, the bluestone, true stucco, and has made a change to incorporate an aluminum clad wood window in lieu of the prior spec for composite cladding. The new illustrations also incorporate the proposed plantings which were mentioned in the first hearing coordinated with city planning specifications. And as well, we're showing the stone walls and fencing in a more illustrative way throughout the presentation. So as Caroline said, this is a single family detached residence in the vocabulary of Ernest Flag, and it's very much designed based on the historic and contemporary precedent found in his work and in the surrounding flag estate. There is contemporary homes built in the nineteen eighties through two thousand and eight, and we've looked at those very carefully. It's a four sided design, meaning every every view has been reviewed in a design context and has been considered. And just for the record, we are in compliance with applicable zoning, use bulk setback regulations. This is an introduction to the first presentation at the first hearing. This followed approval from the local community board, Community Board Two in Staten Island. And this is an introduction into our updated updated design. We'll look at this in much more detail in the coming slides. The east facade top right faces West Entry Road. That's a one-way street. And the left facade below is the stout elevation and that faces the the original home Bocot. Just reviewing our site plan, it's a single zoning lot separated into two separate tax building lots. We are in compliance for setbacks on our new building, top left. Bottom right is the is the Bocot Residence. The original building and later additions equal approximately a hundred and two linear feet along Flag Place here. This I consider to be our primary public view. This is a two-way street Flag Place. This is a one-way street West Entry and we'll look at this in quite a bit of detail here. So this is our site section updated for our new designs. We're maintaining sixty feet between the buildings at the first floor envelopes. Our cellar is mostly buried into the site and so forty seven feet between cellar to Bocot. We're maintaining this existing lawn. We're incorporating a lot line stone wall here with plantings behind it. Both residences, both residences Bocot and the proposed building include a garden terrace on the south side of the building just above a stone base. So we have a stone wall base and garden terrace. This shows our site section through here. Reviewing our our site plan. No real updates to the site plan other than specifically the tree planting coordinated with the site lines as mentioned in the first hearing. We're incorporating a dogwood, red bud, holly trees that will grow quickly and attract birds and other wildlife. Also, this is the common lot line between us and Bocot, and that is where we have that continuous natural stone wall proposed. This is a very busy slide. Essentially what we're showing here are the areas that we focused in on after hearing the recommendations. So our dashed lines that you'll see numerous times throughout the presentation, that represents the initial presentation approved by the Community Board. And we've lowered the building just a bit more than half a story. We've addressed fenestration. We've simplified fenestration. We've simplified the massing. We've lowered the first floor into the ground by two feet. We've removed the pergola. We've simplified our dormers throughout and lowered much of that. And just generally simplified the front entryway as well. Quieted down the building, if you will. So this is our front elevation from the original public hearing. This is our comparison drawing where we show the new in comparison to the to the prior submission. And the updated design. And we've got similar slides in this comparison for all four elevations. So this is the left side elevation. This is the side facing Bocot. This is the comparison drawing. See our stone wall with the natural fieldstone incorporated. Our garden terrace above a stone base here remains. The rest of the building quieted and massing reduced fenestration simplified. That's our new left side elevation. Right side elevation, that is the higher end of the site, looking at it from the opposite side as the original. This is our comparison. We've also incorporated the lot line running fencing, just to keep it in context. We can see here that our first floor elevation is now at grade, which is consistent with Bocot on its higher side, walks right out at grade. That's the update. And the rear elevation. That's the original. Here's our comparison. And that's our update. And just note, there also is the fencing on this rear property line that you would see in this view. We left it off just for clarity, so you can see what's happening in the rear yard. This is the photo of the primary public view of the site. To the left is Bocot's lower garage wing with the floor above. Multi-story gabled section is above that to the left. At the street line corner flag and West Entry Road is the stone wall extension of the building, which we've also incorporated into our designs. To the right is fifteen West Entry Road. That's not a landmark property. And note that the photo is taken as all the photos of the site have been taken when the trees are bare of leaf. So this is the most visible time of year. And we've been consistent with that through the presentation. So this is our original through Community Board Two and the initial public hearing. You see the house's center of the image. This is our update. And you see we've incorporated that that planting and just a note that's any planting we're showing is is the size at planting time, but these are quick growing trees which will which will mature quickly and and provide a lot of coverage. This is a secondary view from Flag Place. We didn't update this one. This is the original. You see it's the house can be very marginally seen through the Bocot property. This all this, the trees here are on Bocot's property, so they're in control of that coverage. As our building has been simplified and massing lowered and didn't, we didn't update this. Didn't think it necessary, but this is Bocot's essentially their rear yard with their swimming pool and so on. This is a close up of that public view, but zoomed in quite close. This is the original presentation. You see includes pergola above the garage structure. The garage is set into the ground in a similar way that Bocot is and so on. These eaves are similar to the height above grade that Bocot is. We've simplified it further. This is our this is our update, again, lower into the ground, closer to the street, deeper into the topography and simplified massing. And that's the update showing the the planting that's coordinated with city planning filing. Our materials, we're continuing to propose the fieldstone, natural fieldstone. This is quarried thin cut fieldstone. We have a couple of manufacturers identified to provide the material. This is going to be used throughout. So on the facade of the building, most of the building has that the stone exterior. And we're using it on the walls, the landscaping and the walls in a similar fashion that Flag established, which was having that concrete wall with the stone embedded as a facing. Our coursing and mortar will be will be inspired by not only Flags work, but also the the design manual developed by Stern's Office as part of Copper Flag Estates. We have bluestone, natural bluestone, which will be using anywhere that is visible from the from the public facade. We'll be using that capping our walls, using our treads in our front stairs. And again, we have a stucco, which is a true stucco application in one place on the building. We've continued to propose use of hardy plank in the small amount of areas that we have on the upper portion of the building for our siding. Here we have a change on this slide, which is the Anderson E Series, which is a wood casement or awning units that we're identifying, but they'll be aluminum clad on the exterior rather than a composite material we had originally in the proposal. Some of our appendices, which we don't have to go through, but they're available if you need some background. The design manual from Stern, of course, the designation reports have been important. Approved plans for precedent, twenty Iron Mine Drive in particular. And we have our design drawings in full if you need to see those. This is a summary of of the precedent and ninety one West Entry Road, and it just illustrates that we are consistent with with the bulk of those buildings. As our reference, we've we studied them very closely and and have remained consistent with the size of those buildings. And I look forward to any questions and certainly allow you to have discussion on the matter. And I'm here, should there be a question for me? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Right, Commissioners, do we have any questions? All right, I'm not seeing any questions. I will note from for the record that we did receive one letter in opposition from an individual. And with all letters, those were shared with you all in advance of today's hearing. So I think we don't have any questions. We can move to our discussion. And as Caroline laid out at the beginning of the presentation, the last time we saw this, the commission was comfortable with a new building on this subdivided lot. And the applicant has presented information that shows that its house to lot size ratio is consistent with other buildings here, including the building we approved on twenty Iron Mine Drive, which was also subdivided from another flag cottage. We approved a new building. And but at the time, the commission asked that the applicant simplify the massing, lower it, kind of think about how to integrate it into the landscape more. And so the applicant has made a number of revisions which have been presented to us today. So we'll begin our discussion with that. Commissioner Bland, would you start this one?
I will. I think this is potentially going to be a very nice building here in this very sensitive situation. I think among the many suburban historic districts we have, this is perhaps the smallest, but the most difficult perhaps to really integrate and get an appropriate building because of the nature of what already exists. But I think the applicant has really listened carefully to our thoughts and comments and has taken them to heart and has achieved what I think is now an appropriate building. I don't have any further thoughts or suggestions to modify what's been what's been proposed.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Luttrell?
Yeah, I would concur with what Fred has said. I think the applicant's done a great job here. The just by reducing the massing and the envelope of the building by pulling it more into the ground, anchoring it better and incorporating incorporating plantings in the into the site and surrounding the building in a in a way that it relates better to those plantings and the topography around it. The colors and the use of materials seem right. I think it's a terrific project. So I can approve it.
Thank you. Commissioner Jefferson?
Oh, I think it's a much improved project. And I think the idea of playing with symmetry and asymmetry and a picturesque facade works very well. I I I think it's much improved and I can approve this.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Shamir Baron?
I agree. The half story or about six plus, six foot plus drop in height really made a huge difference and it just seems like they've approached every single sort of facade, every every bit of the contour of the building in in a very sensitive way and in a responsive way to the kind of this very immediate and local context as the building meets the landscape, as the building meets the views. Really well done and a huge improvement and I think very much appropriate.
Thank you. Commissioner Commissioner Chapin?
Yeah, I agree with previous comments. I think it's it's a huge improvement of the reduction of the height, simplification of lines and the massing is very important. The use of the natural materials is critical at this site. And lowering it into landscape and working with the topography, all of those are great. I think I particularly think the front, back and left work very well. The right side, I thought the tarmac looked a little whatever, but I don't think it's it's that. I think it's okay. I think the asymmetry there is okay. And so I think it's a great improvement. I can approve it as presented.
Okay, Commissioner Goldblum?
Okay, thank you. I I agree with what everyone has been saying. It's it's kudos to the applicant for for listening and figuring out how to make it work. The integration with the site by dropping The integration with the site by dropping it down and and kind of letting the site kind of dictate the form, I think, has been very successful. Uh I think that the detailing uh to what you know, to the extent that we can see it. Looks like looks promising, but I would ask them to look carefully, especially at window sills and window inframents. Uh look at how um. How it was done by by Flag and and that you know that the window details should um. Reinforce the quality of the design. Um and I would also say that, you know, i- i- if the the one the one area for me that and it's as appropriate, I think, as is, but the one area for me that strikes me as a little bit peculiar are these little flap dormers. On the uh two bottom elevations, and if the applicant could, you know, uh. I don't know, they they just seem like they're crowded to the edges and kind of crowding those roofs. Um i- i- if that if you can drop the windows and just have it to go straight across, I think you'll have a much more flag-esque result, but I think it's appropriate as is.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Chen?
Yeah, I agree with what Commissioner Goldblum just said and what uh the rest of the commissioner have indicated before. This is much improved.
Okay, all right. So I think that we have a um consensus to approve. So um I'll ask Commissioner um. Shamir Baron, would you read the motion?
Yes, thank you. In the matter of LPC two one zero four two four seven ninety-one West Entry Road, Ernest Flag's Todd Hill cottages, Bocot Individual Landmark. An empty lot subdivided from the original lot occupied by cottage designed by Ernest Flag and built in nineteen eighteen, and the application is to construct a new house. Uh I note that several Ernest Flag designed houses in this area of Staten Island have been designated as New York City landmarks, including his own estate at Todd Hill, known as Stone Court. Two zero nine Flag Place, which includes a gatehouse, a gardener's cottage, a garage, a stable. And a greenhouse, all since converted to houses. Walcott at two fifty-five Flag Place and the McCall Demonstration House at uh at nineteen twenty-nine Richmond Road. That Flag, though best known for his large institutional designs, was also interested in producing modest, attractive homes affordable to average Americans. That he developed innovative techniques towards the end and in nineteen twenty-two pl- towards that end and in nineteen twenty-two published the book Small Houses, Their Economic Design and Construction. And that the small outbuildings and stone cottages was Flag built on the periphery of his Todd Hill estate, including Bocot and Walcott allude to his vision that the area be developed with residences and detached outbuildings, serving as examples. Of his economical design and construction principles. I further note that the homes Flag design are modest, low to the ground with stone walls and often with steep roofs. Distinctive uh ridge dormers and round capped chimneys integrated with the landscape within the landscape. Flag generally considered surface. Uh dormers and round cap chimneys integrate uh sorry, generally considered surface uh decoration a sham and preferred to suggest. Styles with the general form of the building adding a- adding interest with chimneys and dormers. I further note that the Landmarks Preservation Commission previously allowed the subdivision of a portion of the land occupied by Stone Court and the construction of single family houses on the resulting lots. Um on the certificate of appropriateness eighty-four dash zero zero four zero, the commission approved the construction of one single family house on a lot subdivided from the rear porch. As a ballpark landmark site on the certificate of appropriateness zero eight five nine nine one, and that these houses have been built. I recommend approval, finding that the harmonious relationship with the relationship of the natural site conditions, including plantings and topography and built form was an important aspect of Flag's design in the proposal. Supports this tenant by minimizing regrading, preserving mature trees and incorporating pervious materials and outdoor spaces in the site plan. That the form and massing of the proposed house in terms of its overall height, lot coverage varied intersecting roof lines, roof lines and pitches. Curved ventilator caps, ridge dormers and terraces is harmonious with the predominant massing and key design features the houses designed and built by Flag and houses constructed. More recently on the Walcott and Ernest Flag House individual landmark sites. That the orientation of the proposed house towards West Entry Road, its location on the lot and the distance between the proposed house and Bocot will respect the primacy of the Bocot Individual Landmark Building. That the materials proposed for the facade and windows, including true stone veneer cladding, cementitious stucco, fiber cement siding with a painted finish, faux slate chingles and an aluminum clad. Wood wi- and aluminum clad wood windows will recall and relate sensitively to the cladding and roofing used on the smaller buildings designed by Flag and the stone. Perimeter walls, the foundation walls and cladding of the Ernest Flag House. That the overall fenestration in terms of the predominant use of multi-light casement and awning windows organized in a regular bay pattern and in dormers is still is similar to the window patterns used by Flag. Helping the building to relate harmoniously to the adjacent house and that the work will not detract from the Bocot Individual Landmark.
Thank you very much. And Commissioner Bland, would you second that motion?
Second.
Mark, will you call the vote?
Sheriff Carroll?
Aye.
Commissioner Glenn?
Aye.
Commissioner Shamir Baron?
Aye.
Commissioner Chapin?
Aye.
Commissioner Chen?
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum?
Aye.
Commissioner Jefferson?
Aye.
Commissioner Lutfi?
Aye.
Commissioner uh Holford Smith, oh she she's left. Um so with um. Sorry, with eight in favor and none opposed, the motion passes.
All right, that's approved. Thank you. And that concludes the public meeting portion of our agenda, and we'll now begin the public hearing portion.
That's right. We'll start with public hearing item number one, LPC twenty-two dash zero seven one nine six. An application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Manhattan, block five sixty-seven, lot seventeen. Twenty-two East Tenth Street in the Greenwich Village Historic District. This is a row house built in eighteen forty-four, and the application is to alter the front facade, construct a rear yard addition, excavate the rear yard and alter the party wall.
Yeah, commissioners, the applicants have entered the hearing. Uh they now have control of the presentation. Uh the applicant team may begin. Uh please state your name for the record before you do so. Thanks.
Okay, hello commissioners and landmark staff. Can you hear me all right? Great, thank you. My name is Jack. My name is Jackie Proudie Valen, preservation consultant on the project. I'm here today with the architects, Stephen Harris, John Wool and Kevin Blusiewicz of Stephen Harris Architects. The project we're showing you today is twenty-two East Tenth Street and eighteen forty-four late late Greek revival style row house. This house is being combined at the interior with twenty-four East Tenth, uh where a rear addition was recently approved. The two houses were built as part of a row, and now they are the last two houses remaining from that row. The proposal at the front facade includes removal of a coating from the brick facade. Replacement of a special window at the east bay on the second floor. At the basement and parlor floors, modifying the window opening and installing a new window with nonhistoric configuration and altering the parlor floor doors around. At the rear facade, the proposed work includes a removal of existing additions, construction of a rear addition, and excavation of the rear yard to lower its grade. Uh and also at twenty-four East Tenth Street, where a rear addition was recently approved, installing new windows um at the previously uh previous below grade level of that approved addition. And lastly, at the interior, removing the demising wall because the two houses are being combined into one, one residence. The intent of this proposal is to more uh to more closely return the front facade to its early twentieth century appearance. And to create an addition at the rear that better relates to the development pattern of additions within this block and to the addition that's already been approved at the rear of twenty-four. Next slide, please. Twenty-two East Tenth stands at the south side of the street between University and Fifth Avenue. It's located at the northeastern edge of the Greenwich Village Historic District. Next line. On the left is the front facade in its current condition. As I mentioned, it was built as one of a row with number twenty-four on its left. Twenty-two and twenty-four, as I mentioned before, are the last two houses from this row, and they have both been greatly altered over time. In the eighteen nineties, twenty-two East Tenth was uh converted to bachelor apartments, and the third floor ceiling was raised and the fourth floor was added. In the early twentieth century, the window openings were combined at the front facade and enlarged at each floor, and the fourth the four-story rear L was constructed. In the second half of the twentieth century, the parlor floor window was replaced and joined with the basement windows. On the right is the existing rear facade. Its four-story L has a two-story addition next to it that steps back from the rear of the L, so they are not in the same plane. Next slide, please. Should I continue or should I wait to figure out where the sound interference is coming from?
Oh, it seems to have stopped.
It stopped. Okay, here we go. Um where am I? Uh on the left is the building in the nineteen forties tax photo, and on the right is the building at uh in the designation photo from nineteen sixty-eight. You can see in the the tax photo the alterations that were made at the front facade in nineteen sixteen, the enlarged window openings at each floor, which featured uh multi-light casements with transoms. Uh it's not been determined exactly when the stoop was replaced or when the pilasters were were removed from the entrance surround. It's hard to tell because the photos are not in color, but it does appear that the facade was painted in the nineteen forties tax photo and not painted in the nineteen sixty-eight photo. In the nineteen sixties, the facade was altered at the basement of parlor floors and a multi-light window assembly was installed. The masonry that was installed below the parlor floor's lintel was just parched over. Next slide, please. Here's the existing and proposed front facade elevations. The intent is to return uh this facade to its early twentieth century appearance by restoring a separation between the basement and parlor floors. And to restore pilasters at the entrance surround. The punched windows and rusticated brownstone stucco will be installed at the basement. The parlor floor window will be installed under the lintel again, but it still will be lowered uh lower than than what was um present in the early twentieth century. Uh it is being dropped to more closely align with the original sill height of the original parlor floor windows. And the proposed multi-light windows will have a configuration that aligns with the windows at the floors above, rather than the paired multi-light casements that could be seen in the nineteen forties tax photo. The other work that's within the hearing scope uh at the front facade includes restoring pilasters at the entrance surround and removing the paint from the facade. It's our argument that the the date of the entrance alteration cannot be determined and that the paint should be removed simply because it is detrimental to vapor permeability of the brick, in particular brick of this age. It would therefore be in the best interest of the long-term preservation of the building to allow it to to be unpainted. Next slide, please. Here is that one window in question. It may be the last original window on this facade because the third floor's windows were made taller when that floor's ceiling was raised. Um in conjunction with the addition of the fourth floor and because the other window openings were combined and enlarged. We don't have the detailed drawings yet, but the munting dimensions and details would be replicated exactly. The only change would be that the meeting rail would have to get a little thicker, growing from one inch to one inch and five eights. Next slide, please. Um this project involves involves the removal of the demising wall between the two structures because they are being combined into one residence. For example, here is the current first floor plan for for both houses. Next slide, please. And here's the proposed first floor plan. While the demising wall is is being replaced, the perception of this historic division, as viewed from the street, will not change. LPC has already completed peer review of this change and the construction method to achieve it. Next slide, please. Here are historic maps that show how the interior of the block has changed over time. You'll note that the nineteen sixteen map shows the building at five stories because of the floor that was added in the eighteen nineties. And that its four-story L appears with a one-story addition next to it. Uh next slide, please. And here's a block plan showing the footprint and heights of existing additions on the south side of the block, as well as photos of the locations that are keyed into that plan. Next line. Here's a panorama photo taken from the rear of six East Tenth Street, looking east, showing more shallow full width additions as well as additions that go to the rear lot lines at some houses. Next line. And we'd like to highlight the addition at fifteen East Ninth Street because it has window openings at the garden level that overlook the interior of the block. Next line. Here's that block plan again, this time looking at the north side of the block with photos looking west from the rear yard of twenty-four East Tenth. You can see from this view, there is precedent for rear additions of varying depths. Next line. And here's that same view looking west into the interior of the block with red dotted lines uh outlining where there are additions that are a bit obscured by the trees. And on the right is the very tall apartment building at University Place that abuts twenty-four East Ten. Next line. I'm going to hand the presentation over to the architect in a moment, but before I do, I just want to ask you to keep in mind some recent approvals. Um as you consider the proposed work at the rear of the house. This is one twenty-three Washington Place, where three-story full width addition with large glazed openings was approved, as well as excavation of the rear yard. The grade at the rear yard was lowered by about two feet, creating a sunken garden. Next line. And this is nine Saint Luke's Place, excuse me, nine Saint Luke's Place, which likewise recently received an approval for a three-story full width addition and a sunken garden. Its rear yard was lowered by two foot five inches, and I would like to now introduce John Wool of Stephen Harris Architects to take you through the design.
Good morning, commissioners. Um in discussing this proposal, uh looking at the rear, I think, is where most of the work um is is underway. Interestingly, this project has allowed us an opportunity to reduce the massing and reduce the square footage of twenty-two East Tenth Street. So the proposition opens up uh this backyard in a way that currently, as you see on the right, is quite crowded with the four-story boot. Um in addition to uh the two-story uh full width addition and the existing fire escapes. Um next. Uh this is the existing condition to the left. Um you'll see it's an all painted facade. Um the massing has the four-story uh boot. It has the two-story full width, and it has all of the fire escapes. Um on the back wall. Um our proposal is to remove um that, so the the four-story boot will be removed. Uh the two-story addition is removed. Uh we would like to replace it with a three-story addition that is full width. Um pulled further back towards the house. Um the three punched openings will be in line with the original openings um on the original facade. Um they are approximately five foot three inches wide. Um they're approximately eleven feet tall on the parlor floor and about nine foot seven on the floor above that. Um at the garden, it will be uh one opening that will be divided into three subsections, mimicking to some extent uh what happens above. Next. Um probably best understood here by looking at an axonometric. Uh to the left, you see uh that sixteen foot eight extension of. Uh the four-story boot addition, which is crowding this whole area of the donut. Um the removal of that um allows us to then put uh the three foot seven. Uh deep full width addition on the lower three floors. Um and then uh the projecting um terrace um on the parlor floor, which then extends out into the garden. Um next. Uh we are also proposing to lower the grade of the garden in order to make it align with uh the finished heights of the spaces inside the house. Um there is no structure being placed beneath the garden. It's simply a change of grade. Um it will be planted um and will remain part of the green space of this donut. It's being lowered by approximately three foot eleven at its most. Next. Um again, comparing the existing and the proposed, uh you see here that we are adding um. Uh windows at the garden level. Once the removal of that fence is now possible, since these are now joined as one property. So the removal of that fences is allowing us to put those low uh windows in at the garden level. Um you can see here as well the way that planting is being incorporated into our design uh to unite it with that green space and to really open up uh this corner of the donut. Next. In conjunction here, you see that the work in the front is, as Jackie indicated, uh restoring this to uh an earlier twentieth century appearance. Um in which uh the large openings are remaining. Um we are hoping to have the surround at the front. Um match its twin on the remainder of those two of this terrace. Um keeping uh the twentieth century stoop design, but but rebuilding it structurally. Um and um uh removing the paint and restoring the windows at the street level. and removing the paint and restoring the windows at the street level. And in the rear, the reduction in massing by the removal of those additions and a reduction of about 940 square feet overall in the floor area of the building. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Do we have any questions? Okay, I don't see any questions at this time, so we'll move to public testimony. And we may have questions after that. So if you're in the meeting and would like to speak on this item, please raise your virtual hand so we can identify you. And I will turn it over to Sasha Sealy to take us through the testimony.
Thank you. So for my sign up, I have Anna Markham from the Village of Preservation. Anna, you should be receiving a request from me now. Okay, Anna, I see you have accepted my request. Please just unmute your mic and state your name for the record. You have three minutes.
Good morning, commissioners, and thank you for the opportunity to testify. My name is Anna Markham, and I'm the Director of Research and Preservation for Village Preservation. I am speaking on behalf of the organization today. Village Preservation commends the thoughtful and well-researched restoration of the street-facing elevation. However, we would like to see more specificity around the excavation portion of the project in light of the recent loss of the nine landmark row houses at 4454 9th Avenue, 351-355 West 14th Street in the Gansport Market Historic District. We believe it is imperative that all applicants share as much detail as possible about excavation projects, including discussion of the potential risk to adjacent buildings along with the proposed safety monitoring and harm reduction strategies. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Let me just take a glance back over and see if we have anyone else who wishes to speak on this item. And I do not see any more hands raised. So I will just add for the record that Manhattan Community Board Two recommends approval of this application. And I will turn it back over to you, Chair Carol.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, so I'd like to turn back to Jackie and John and see if you'd like to respond to the comments we've heard, particularly about the excavation. And I know you did describe that we are, the engineer that LPC retains has reviewed the drawings. But if you want to speak more specifically about the methods and plans for monitoring, that's fine as well.
Certainly, it's my pleasure to. We we have already engaged with an extensive process of review, not just with the design engineer for the project, but the the construction engineer. So the means and methods engineer, who will be doing all of the temporary shoring, all of the supportive excavation. All of that has been prepared and shared with the LPC's reviewing peer arch, peer engineer. We've had a constructive dialogue, and I believe everyone is satisfied that those concerns, which are absolutely legitimate concerns, have been addressed and everyone is comfortable that that this can proceed.
Okay. And is Silman your engineer?
Silman is the engineer, as is, Silman is the engineer of of design. And the means and methods engineer is Plan B, both of whom have worked together as a team on other projects of this scale in this district.
Okay, great. Thank you. Commissioner Shamir Baron.
Yes, I just have a question about the front street facade. And did you, maybe you said, and forgive me if I didn't hear it. Is the brick going to be cleaned, replaced? What is happening to the brick? And and I'm assuming that the that the building that we approved next door previously, that was, the paint was removed. What's being done to the brick?
Yes, the, we are proposing to remove the brick on this house as well, number 22.
The paint, Jackie, the paint.
What did I just say?
The brick. The paint of the brick.
Oh, my gosh. Yes, removing the paint, there might be, you know, you never really know what you're going to find until you get into construction. There might be a brick that needs to be replaced at select locations. Yes, continuing to correct myself.
Has that work been done next door already?
It has not begun, but it's been approved. Paint removal has been approved next door.
Sorry, sorry. I'm sorry for interrupting. I'm just asking if any of the work has begun so that you might be able to understand what what the condition of the brick behind the paint is, or that's not been done yet.
Commissioner, it has not yet begun. But we are in the process of beginning that, but we have not yet begun the the brick restoration work and the removal of the paint on 24.
Okay, and since, and on 22, because that facade was raised, I would expect that there would be a slightly different brick.
Yeah, I'm curious. I'm curious.
So what happens if the top floor is a very different brick? You can see the line and from the brick below and what would your intent be here?
Our intent would be to preserve its history. My my general thought is, look, it's a quality transformation of that building. It was not done without thought. And I would think that someone would have attempted to find a brick that was harmonious with the original. But I expect it wouldn't be surprised if there is some mild transition between the 20th century brick and the 19th century brick.
Okay. All right. Other questions? All right, let's then make a move to close the hearing and begin our discussion. So Commissioner Chapin, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Thank you. And Commissioner Lutfi, would you second that motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, so we'll begin our discussion. And applicants laid out the scope. And there's work both on the front facade, including removing the paint, shifting the parlor floor window back up, introducing two punched openings at the basement level and changing the door surround. And then at the back, removing the existing additions, pulling, doing a new three-story addition that's less deep, excavating to lower the rear yard. And on the interior, the removal of the demising wall or the party wall, which from the street, I think you have new walls in in the similar location. So I think your point was from the street, it would not be perceptible. And our engineer, Don Friedman from Old Structures, has reviewed it with all of this work with your engineers as well. So we'll begin our discussion. Commissioner Jefferson, would you like to start this one?
Sure, sure. It's it's extremely well done. I think the exterior spaces, the circulation of the exterior spaces, the ways, the way they're arranged in plan and in section is very well done. I think the 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 rear of this is wonderful example of what is possible. And if I can approve this, the front facade, I don't know, the the, I don't know if they can remove the paint and 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 have a facade that's harmonious and consistent, I can approve it too. So on a whole, I can approve the whole project.
Okay. Great, thank you. Commissioner Gustafson?
Yeah, with on the on the front, I I agree with Commissioner Jefferson. The paint removal is the only issue of concern and I and there they can, as they move along, they can work with our staff to figure out the best solution on that. Otherwise, the changes on the front facade, I think, are 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 of an improvement. And they and they bring it back to at least partway to where it where it started. I'm okay with the excavation and I and I think that what they've done with the back of this, the the rear yard. The word that came came to mind is even though they're doing a lot, it calms the back of the building substantially. And and it is well within the character of the rear yard additions and in the in this in this donut. So I find it to be appropriate.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Shamir Baron?
Yes, I agree. I think the work on the rear is really successful, just like the first project, the second one, this expansion just brings out the the least attractive envy in me for these applicants. The customers are very lucky to to be doing this, and it's an extraordinary project. I think that in the front facade is the only area that I'm just a little bit concerned about still. I think that there needs to be real careful attention, as I'm sure these architects will oversee properly of the paint removal. I think that the that the the answer to your question, Chair Carol, was the right one, that if there is a kind of difference between the addition, you know, the added level in terms of the brick, that should, I would think, read. And in fact, I think that there should be the ability to really read the differences between the two buildings, the differences in 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 vintage and and other aspects of the two buildings side by side so that we can still understand them as distinct and having their own, you know, age and history. So that's that's important. And I think they need to really keep an eye on that. But I think this project is just so beautiful, and I think it's absolutely appropriate.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Chapin?
I think this is a great project. I agree with others that they have very sensitively you know, handled the and successfully handled the back. And I think that the way they dealt with the front facade to reflect the building's history is very appropriate and shows the development of the facade over time in a in a very sensitive way. So I can approve this as presented. I think it's it's very fine.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Goldblum?
I agree. I think it's appropriate as as presented. It's I I agree with the other people who are saying that we've got to watch.
Okay. Commissioner Chen?
Yeah, same here. I think he is, this is very successfully done. And and as Michael Goldblum just said, let's watch the paint analysis.
Okay, Commissioner Bland?
For about 28 years, my office was 200 feet from this house. And or these two houses. So I know it very well. And I want to point out that number 22 was the house of Edgar Taffel, who was the prime follower of Frank Lloyd Wright in our in our area. I think it was he who changed those windows, and this was his studio and gallery. And I once visited him there in that space. You know, so I have to wonder, is it appropriate? It clearly is. I'm the last, nearly the last one to speak, so it's going to be appropriate. But I had to stop and think because of his importance, is is that change worthy of, you know, continuing to show the layering of history, let's call it? I I think not, but I I just did want to say that. Nobody else had mentioned this yet, so I I thought we should do it. We should at least have that on the record, that this was Edgar Taffel's house, and he's an important architect. It, the this gives me pause, you know, this combining these gargantuan new spaces inside and all. But I guess that has nothing to do with our approval, but it still does, I have to say, give me pause. Mostly, I suppose, on a social level, which doesn't count here as an as a preservation district issue. And what everybody else has said is certainly true. This is an incredibly suave essay of 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 a series of of articulations of windows and 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 massing on the rear that, of course, is a level which was never ever contemplated in the past. But I suppose it's it's so well done, if if not over well done, that we can't say it's inappropriate. But I I do find it a little a little much myself, even though it is so well done. All that I felt I needed to say, but I'm not going to vote against it because I think it is so. But I do think it is very suave. I'll leave it at that.
Thank you. All right, Commissioner Lutfi?
First of all, Fred, thank you for that history. It it's great to know that, and it gives me a little pause as well. But it's wonderful information. I do feel like the applicant has done an excellent job of working on the project and integrating the back of this of this townhouse with the one next to it. It's seamless. It looks good. The excavation makes sense. And I also feel that the work on the front has brought the property back more closely to where it was originally. I feel that I know that the applicant's going to be working closely with staff, and I recommend that on the paint removal. But I I agree with what Addie said, which is that you know what, if there's a difference between the color of the bricks, so be it. And I think it should show because it shows the history of the and the aging of the buildings. And we we oftentimes, we advocate for that. We want the, we want side by side buildings that are being combined to read distinct, you know, as distinct buildings. So that's okay with me. I do also happen to agree with Fred that when I look at the project as a whole, as nice as it is and as well done as it is, that does give me pause. It is a mammoth project. And then I think of other projects, much like one of the projects this morning where people are trying to do a rooftop addition and they can't manage to get it you know, get it done with minimal visibility. So I'm having a hard time reconciling that. But I can approve, I'm happy to approve this project.
Thank you. Yeah, and I think, you know, those are all good points. And I do want to thank Fred for raising the Edgar Taffel history. And that was interesting and helpful to know. And I think Commissioner Lutfi, you know, trying to reconcile one application to another, I mean, each has different site conditions. So this one is in a block that is very dense with a variety of additions. And so I think one, while the other one was a rooftop addition, that's not the case here. But I think that the you know, that the contexts allow for a different set of criteria to be used and thought about. So I think in the context of this block with varied additions and varied rear yard spaces and and some backhouses, I think one can find this consistent with our past approvals at the rear of buildings. And I think, you know, the combining of the two inside, I think this is always kind of people have, you know, an interesting thing for us because people have personal feelings about it. But from an appropriateness point of view, we have, of course, approved it many times, but the, you know, we've looked at the party wall to ensure that there is enough there that from the street, the 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 fact that it's two buildings is still discernible. And of course, looking very carefully at the structural impacts of that proposed work. So and I think in this case, both of those are addressed. And so I think, you know, I am comfortable with it as being consistent with other approvals that we've done. So I do think we have a support here to move ahead with an approval. Commissioner Jefferson, would you make a motion to approve the project? And then just add the condition at the end that they continue to work with the staff as they remove the paint to to determine, you know, the appropriate methodology and results.
Sure. Sure. In the matter of LPC dash 22 dash zero seven one ninety six, 22 East 10th Street, Greenwich Village Historic District. Applications to alter the front facade, construct a rear yard addition, excavate the rear yard and alter the party wall. I note that the building's style, scale and material and details are among the features that contribute to this special architectural and historical character of the Greenwich Village Historic District. Staff also notes that the facade was significantly altered in the early 20th century. I recommend approval with modifications, finding that the removal of nonhistoric infill at the basement and parlor floors and modifications and modification to the height the height of the parlor floor windows opening will return the primary facade closer to its significant early 20th century appearance. As evidenced by historic photographs, that the proposed parlor floor windows assembly will match the historic upper floor window in terms of configuration, operation, detailed material, and finish. That the proposed wood paneled primary double leaf door with glazed transom will be in keeping with the typical doors typically found at row houses of a similar age and style within the historic district. That the proposed partial removal of the party wall between the two buildings will combine into will combine is limited to the interior and therefore will not damage or destroy any significant exterior architectural features of the building facade or roof and will be removed and complies with the Department of Building Regulations under the supervision of a licensed professional engineer to protect the building and the adjacent buildings. That the proposed work at the rear yard would will not be visible from any public therapy. That the demolition of the existing rear extension and the construction of a new rear yard addition will not damage or destroy any significant architectural feature of the building. That the proposed two-story plus basement addition will will project minimally into the rear yard and will not significantly diminish the block's central green space. That the material and finish of the rear addition, featuring brick cladding, punched masonry openings, and metal railing, would be in keeping with rear yard extensions that fall within the block and throughout the district. That the proposed excavation of the entire rear yard would be conducted in compliance with the Department of Buildings Regulations under the supervision of a licensed professional engineer to protect the building's facade and the adjacent buildings. That the green space will be maintained on top of the excavated allow for the possibility of future second plantage. And that this block features a variety of conditions at the rear yards, including a number of full depth extensions. This involves secondary structures. Therefore, change in the grade of the rear yard will not distract from the coherent green space. However, I find that the prior removal of the original Greek revival door in
Commissioner Jefferson, that is not one of the recommendations. So I think we just need to end with a recommendation that they continue to work with the staff on the paint removal to ensure the the underlying brick is in satisfactory and historic condition.
Okay.
And that's it.
I recommend that the architect continue to work with the staff to to work with the staff.
With the paint removal.
Paint removal. And what's the other one? We just added a paint removal. And
And I think that's it. Okay, great. Commissioner Chen, would you second that motion?
Second.
Mark, will you call the vote?
Chair Carroll?
Aye.
Commissioner Bland?
Aye.
Commissioner Shamir Baron?
Aye.
Commissioner Chapin?
Aye.
Commissioner Chen?
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum?
Aye.
Commissioner Gustafson?
Aye.
Commissioner Jefferson?
Aye.
Commissioner Lutfi?
Aye.
With nine in favor and none opposed, the motion passes.
That's approved, and please do continue to work with the staff as you remove the paint from the facade, and good luck.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Okay, well, now move to the next items. There are three of them being presented together. I will read these in in kind of a hybrid manner. Item two, LPC 22 dash zero seven five one seven four seventeen West Twentieth Street, the Chelsea Historic District. This is block seven eighteen lot ninety nine in the borough of Manhattan. Item three, LPC twenty two dash zero five zero seven five one eight four nineteen West Twentieth Street, Chelsea Historic District, block seven eighteen lot ninety eight in the borough of Manhattan. And item four, LPC twenty two dash zero three six three three four twenty one West Twentieth Street, Chelsea Historic District, block seven eighteen lot ninety seven in the borough of Manhattan. All three are applications for a certificate of appropriateness. And this is a building that is a freestanding faculty house built in eighteen ninety two with within an ensemble of English collegiate Gothic-style buildings built largely between eighteen eighty three and nineteen oh two, designed primarily by Charles Coolidge. And the application is to install ironwork at the at the stoop and or entrances at all three locations.
Okay, Commissioners, the applicants have entered the hearing. Huntley, you now have control of the presentation. You just need to click on your screen. And then you can advance the slides using your arrow keys. Please state your name for the record. You may begin.
Sure. My name is Huntley Gill with Party Architects. And we're going from a very large project on 10th Street to a very small project on West Twentieth Street. These, this is a proposal to add conforming ironwork at three stoops on these wonderful, wonderful buildings. This is where I would live if I were a very rich man. On the north side of West Twentieth Street towards Ninth Avenue, part of the Theological Seminary originally, now three separate houses. Three separate clients have engaged us to to add ironwork to these steps. There's a very serious homeless problem here that has manifested itself over the last couple of years. You have a couple of letters on the record talking about that issue. And I'm I'm always a little concerned about trying to do things like this because usually, of course, New York Row House, the essence of New York Row House is repetition. So if you try and put a gate on one house out of twenty, say, I just don't think it works. In this instance, these are three houses and with very similar stoops, steps and entrances. And this work will be done on all three. So that aspect doesn't particularly concern me. We also have designed this in a way that's very simple and reversible. I would also point out that you have in the past, in two thousand and eleven, you approved extensive changes to the ironwork on these houses for proposal by Brother Brenda Bell. Most of the work was in the rear yard in the close because these had gone from being faculty housing to being individual houses, so they were enclosed with with conforming ironwork. As you can see in this plan, to reflect that fact. And it also cleaned up a bunch of kind of, you know, the sort of things that schools are want to do, really horrible lifts and the like. One thing that this is the existing, this was the condition in the close before. And this is the, oops, sorry, that's the condition after the work that you reviewed and approved in two thousand and eleven was done. One thing I also have to mention that is oddly enough, in this street, this is one street, wonderful houses, mostly repertorial, where by far the majority of the steps are fenced. And that's an unusual condition in Manhattan. I have some photographs of them, but I didn't make them into the presentation. What we are proposing is the very, it's actually, it works out quite nicely. What we're proposing is to add this ironwork. You'll note that we've restricted it to just two simple posts into the brownstone, which brownstone has already been restored. So it counts as a pretty easily reversible intervention, if possible, if need be. And what also works out really nicely is that this design, we've included this curve to reflect the curve of the step, the curve of the ironwork adjacent. And all the heights work out to be exactly the same. In other words, each of these bits of ironwork rise is the same two foot eight inches above the brownstone, which makes the whole composition actually work rather nicely. And it's not always possible to do that. Use the rendering of the condition from head on. And you can see, we've also been careful to make everything aligned, so that everything kind of has its little rhythm to it. And it's designed so that these gates can be left open at ninety degrees, especially during the day, if need be. And and so that they won't look kind of ajar. They'll look like they're meant to be open. Elevation plan. And then, you know, full set. That's basically it.
Okay, and we do have some questions. Thank you. Commissioner Jefferson?
Yes, in in this Chelsea Historic District, can you show me examples of stoops that have gates on them in the district? Because is this is this something that's typical in the district?
It's I'd have to go. I haven't I haven't gone around taking pictures of stoops around the district that have gates. I know that there are many. I could certainly do that if that's something that's helpful. I will note that this, almost the the vast majority of this block is gated, usually not at the steps themselves, but in front. The houses are set back a little bit. They were clearly, some of them are magnificent. Some of them have these incredible anthemians and the like. But they also clearly were not original to the houses. So there's a history of this block, almost uniquely, of adding gates after the houses go up, if that answers your question.
Thing in my mind is that this is only one step up or two steps up. It's not, but and I wanted to see if there was examples of that in the district, but we don't have any.
I don't I don't happen to have them. I could get some. I mean, I have to comment that I think that it's easier to do a gate and a kind of an English step like this than there is to a high Dutch stoop. I think it works better. And in this instance, because everything aligns with all the adjacent ironwork. I mean, the houses here, both these three houses and the entire north side of Twentieth Street is gated.
Well, I'm I'm just, because it's a historic district and this is a very strange, this is a social issue that I think eighteen nineteenth century, it's always been there. So now we're putting up a gate. So that's my concern. And perhaps that's nothing to do with the issue of the gate itself, but I just wanted an example.
Okay. Mr. Gill, do you have photographs in this presentation that show the streetscape? I mean, as you point out, these are not row houses. This was an institutional building. It was faculty housing. But across the street from you, there are a lot of row houses. And I know you were talking about ironwork in front of all of those row houses. And if you have some streetscape photos, that would help.
I have them on my computer. I don't have them in the presentation. If you want me to share, if I if I can share my screen, I can share.
No, I think, well, let's take some more questions. And we'll see if it's, well, because it's it's a process to have you share your screen on top of ours. So we'll see if we can go there. Okay, Commissioner Chapin, followed by Commissioner Lutfi.
Yeah, I wanted to ask about the position of the gate and why you decided to put it where it is and, you know, take it sort of in between it. In other words, instead of having the gate at to to be flush with the gates at the sides or not the gates, the fencing at the side. And then, you know, have the curved approach to the gate somewhat higher on another on another step or back on the step, rather. So if you just speak to the design.
Maybe if we could go to the rendering, it might be easier to explain.
Thank you.
If you take a look at this, there are two different heights. In other words, the gate that goes runs perpendicular to the building is at one height. Although, again, it's a consistent two foot eight above the brownstone from which it rises. And here, so the idea, and you can see how these gates curve as they come along, along with the steps. So our thought was, this could be halfway in between. You didn't want it full height. That would make it too dominant. You didn't want it at this height because it would read sort of like you're trying to continue that fence. You're not. It's a separate element. And it curves back in to tie into one of the posts perfectly. And I like, I mean, I really am fond of the way that all kind of worked out myself. Does that answer your question?
I I think, yes, I I think so. You know, obviously, there are a number of different decisions. I assume you you feel that a gate is needed to keep, because it's no longer institutional but residential. So you wanted to not have it, you prefer to not have maybe people coming up on the steps, you know, which would have been another alternative, just from a use point of view also. Okay, thank you.
Okay, and Commissioner Lutfi, Commissioner Lutfi, did you have a question?
I, my question was answered, but I but I did want to say, in connection to Evrato's question, is there any way we can just put up a street view of Google Maps? Because it it shows the block if we rotate.
So we do, I don't know, the applicant did submit to the staff a photograph of Cushman Row across the street, which is, he says, has continuous fencing all the way down the block. And, you know, I don't know why it wasn't in the presentation, but Abby. Okay, so this is what is across the street, Cushman Row, which has continuous fencing all the way down the street. And then on this, on the on the same side of the row as the subject buildings, there are openings looking into the close and then other institutional buildings, which so not a row context of row houses on the side of the street that the applicant application is on. But this is what is across the street from it. Thank you.
And I would comment that I suspect a part of the homeless problem on this block, and you know, they've had literally encampments here with tents set up. One guy fell into the door of Dean Amro's house when he opened it, one where he took the paper. And I think maybe part of the problem is that everything else in on the street is gated. And and it's that that leaves these is the only steps that are kind of open at night for the homeless, unfortunately.
Okay, and I think I wonder if Abby, if you want to, is it is it easy enough to quickly go to street view so we can have a sort of a three sixty view on the street?
Sure. Give me one second.
And while Abby is doing that, I might point out that even the new buildings on the Tenth Avenue have have gates. So it's not just, it's not just re revival. It's it's a consistent pattern all the way down the block.
Okay, so.
So these are the, these are the buildings here, yes?
Yes.
And you want to see?
And then, so just just to for everybody to understand the context. So there's no, there are no row houses. Whoops, Abby, hang on a sec. No row houses on the north side of the street. You have the 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 subject building, which was faculty housing. And then a new commission-approved building, whoops, to the right, which we just went out of view. Yep. And then to the left, there is more open space looking into the close. And then I believe there's another commission-approved building, and then the avenue building. So there is no continuous, oh, and there's, yeah, there's one more. There's the church, which has fencing in front of it. And then another former theological seminary building, general theological seminary building with a wall in front of it. And then the new building. And then across the street are row houses with a variety of fences, including ones that go in front of stoops. There's one there. And then, of course, the Cushman Row, which has the continuous fencing that we saw in the prior photograph. Okay, thank you, Abby. So let's see if there are other questions, Commissioners. All right, why don't we move to public testimony? And we may have more questions after that. So if you're in the meeting and would like to testify on this item, please raise your virtual hand so we can identify you. And I And I will turn it over to Sasha Sealy to take us through the testimony.
Already. Thank you. So I do have Carrie Keenan from Manhattan Community Board Four. Carrie, you should be receiving a request from me now. Okay, Carrie, I see that you have joined the meeting. And now you're able to just please unmute your mic and state your name for the record. You have three minutes.
Hi, thank you. Good morning, commissioners. I'm Carrie Keenan, co-chair of Community Board Four's Chelsea Land Use Committee. On April 6th, um, Community Board Four voted to recommend a denial of the certificate of appropriateness for the addition of gates at the front stoops of 417, 419, and 421 West 20th Street on the seminary block. The seminary block was donated to the Episcopal Church by Chelsea's founder Clement Clark Moore to serve as the town square for his planned community. Transoms above the doors to these three row houses still bear the addresses 2, 3, and 4 Chelsea Square. As the block was known, long after notable architect Charles Coolidge Haight's transformation of the campus in picturesque English collegiate Gothic style during the 1880s and 90s. The three row houses are of his design built to house faculty. Their entrances harmonize with very similar Haight design entrances further west on the block. The houses were sold to private owners in 2011, at which time their private rear yards were fenced off from the adjacent seminary grounds. As you heard, the stated reasons for the application is that the houses owners report homeless people trespassing on their stoops and wish to protect their homes from infringement of their property. While this applicant's architect argued that the gates would be consistent with historic rowhouse gates across 20th Street, those, those buildings are of an earlier Greek revival style. Their gates stand well forward of the entrances and were conceived from the start as integral extensions of their garden fences. The more pertinent context is that, that of the seminary itself, where no grade level building entrance is gated, including very similar entrances with which the seminary rowhouse entrances are thematic. The steps and railings of Haight's rowhouse entrance curve into the sidewalk, creating a benign expression of openness and welcome. The proposed gates have an effect far beyond their physical presence, throwing a barrier across Haight's inviting entrances. Although the applicant's architect has suggested the gates could remain open, he stated there was no promise they will. The applicant was asked to provide evidence of loitering or trespassing in the form of photographs, police reports, calls to 311 or otherwise, and none was provided. Additionally, there was a discussion around alternative methods to dissuade trespassing and increase the owner's sense of safety, such as lighting, cameras, intercom, et cetera. But the applicant did not feel these were suitable for consideration. Lastly, nearby residents and neighbors report that there is very little of such issues on 20th Street. And numerous community members attended the committee and full board meetings to request a denial of the application. In conclusion, the stated reason for the addition of gates does not merit a permanent change to these top tier historic landmark buildings and CB4 recommends denial of a certificate of appropriateness. Thank you so much.
Um, let me take a glance over Pamela Wolf from Save Chelsea. You should be receiving a request from me now. Okay, Pamela, I see you've accepted my request. Please just unmute your mic and state your name for the record. You have three minutes.
Good morning, commissioners. I am Pamela Wolf, president of Save Chelsea. Save Chelsea strongly opposes the application to install gates at the entrances to 417, 19, and 21 West 20th Street in the heart of the Chelsea Historic District, one of New York's finest blocks. The gates would destroy the open and welcoming character of original architect Charles Coolidge Haight's rowhouse entrances. The renderings of the existing and proposed conditions make this painfully clear at a glance. Clement Clark Moore planned the seminary block as the heart of his community. It is a rare triumph that Haight transformed it without sacrificing the public benefit Moore envisioned. There is no more sensitive location in Chelsea. Presenting a community board for the applicant's architect cited as a precedent, the introduction of fencing within the close behind the rowhouse group. That was justified by the seminary sale of the row houses to private owners. That fencing separates the newly established private property from the private property of the seminary and is not visible from the public way. There is no corresponding change in ownership type at the front of the houses, which remain an interface between private and public property. The applicant's architect also claimed the gates would be contextual with those of the earlier row houses across 20th Street. It makes no sense to match Haight's collegiate Gothic rowhouse entrances with these much earlier Greek revival rowhouse entrances while mismatching them with the other building entrances on the unified set piece seminary block itself, none of which have gates. Haight's rowhouses, rowhouse entrances are three of five very similar thematic entrances fronting 20th Street. Part of an overall picturesque ensemble designed for public enjoyment. That is the critical context. Haight's original design intent was clearly to make the entrances feel contiguous, continuous with the sidewalk into which their curved steps and railings flow. Their shape is echoed in the curves of the entrance door and framements. The deep recess of the doors further suggests an inviting sense of being drawn in. Every piece works in concert. The proposed gates feel like a police barricade negating Haight's entire design direction. It couldn't be clearer that he never meant these entrances to have gates. We have witnessed no particular homeless presence in this part of the neighborhood of Chelsea. The proposed gates may be more a function of new owners than of the homeless. It would be a real shame if, after surviving New York's most prime ridden decades intact, Haight's gift to the street was forever marred by gentrification. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Missy Adams. You should be receiving a request from me now. All right, Missy, I see you've accepted my request. Please just unmute your mic and state your name for the record. You have three minutes.
Hi. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Just state your name for the record, please.
Okay, terrific. Uh, my name is Missy Adams. I have lived at, uh, 9th Avenue, uh, near 20th Street for, uh, about 25 years. So I've seen the neighborhood in very bad times when there were drug dealers on the corner and transvestite prostitutes to now, when it is a very, very different neighborhood. But I, um, and I, I know, um, the residents in the houses of, um, uh, that are being considered, uh, not the Brodskis, of course, but the others. And, and they're very lovely people. So I, I hesitate to speak up, but I, I feel I have to, um, because those proposed fences, um, won't protect anything. I mean, honestly, they, they're, uh, they won't keep the homeless out. There really aren't any homeless that, that go there because there's so much foot traffic along that, that road. Uh, it's, um, people could still access the stoops. So the fences, as they're designed, would in fact afford protection to someone looking to camp there. Um, honestly, I haven't seen anyone hanging out or sleeping on the stoops anywhere on the block. Uh, the homeless actually go to the restaurant structures when they want to sleep or do anything. Uh, so it, it's just not a problem there. Uh, I also have to point out that the fences would spoil the look of the houses. They would no longer match stoops down at the Highline Hotel, which were part of the seminary. Uh, I don't know why they've been left off of any of the visuals, but they match the stoops almost exactly. And they don't have fencing and they're beautiful. And there's just no need for the fencing. Um, the fencing would, you know, added would repudiate the intent of the original design, which was to be open and accessible. It was the, the conflating fencing along the block with the south side, which is a very, very different, Cushman Row is a very different, uh, design. And the picture with the white columns, I think, was incorrect. That's not Cushman Row, but the Google, the Google, um, pictures were correct. But Cushman Row is very different. They have gardens in the front. There aren't gates on the stoops. Uh, there are gates, there are fences in front. Uh, it's, it's a totally different design. The design of the, of the, um, seminary houses were supposed to be open and accessible and, uh, and putting them there is really just creating more of a gated community. I mean, they, they have access through the inside. They don't have to deal with the homeless or anyone. Uh, it's, it, it all comes down to, we have a homeless problem. It can't be solved with a fence. Don't spoil these beautiful buildings. Thank you.
Right. Christina Britton Conroy from Victorian Society of New York. You should be receiving a request from me now. Okay, Christina, I see you've accepted my request. Please just unmute your mic and state your name for the record. You have three minutes.
Yay. Exitable screen.
Good morning, commissioners. I'm Christina Conroy for the Victorian Society, New York. Now founded in New York in 1966, the Victorian Society in America is dedicated to fostering the appreciation and preservation of our 19th and early 20th century heritage. The New York chapter promotes preservation of our historic districts, individual landmarks, interiors, and civic art. The applicants for these three adjacent buildings are proposing the installation of three atypical stoop gates. Commissioners, while late 19th century brownstones typically featured high stoops which raised them above the streets, these faculty houses have a much more open welcoming character with short flights of low steps leading to broad stoops and wide double doors. The proposed gates, though matching the existing ironwork, end up obscuring the handsome painted wood doors and historic brownstone arches, inappropriately altering the relationship of these three buildings to the street. A simple chain, which tells people this is private property, is a better solution. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Michelle Arbleau from Historic District Council. You should be receiving a request from me, Michelle. Okay, Michelle, I see you've accepted my request. Please just unmute your mic and state your name for the record. You have three minutes.
Hello, commissioners. Michelle Arbleau for the Historic District Council. HTC appreciates the sensitivity of the ironwork design and perhaps the impetus for proposing it. However, we believe that this sort of insertion into fabric is anti-urban. Stoops are the city's great threshold elements. They mediate between the public realm and private space. Clogging that up with a gate spoils this wonderful device. We ask the LPC to decline this application. Thank you.
Thank you. Let me just take a glance back over and see if we have any more hands raised. And I do not see that there is anyone else who wishes to speak on this item. So I will turn it back over to you, Chair Carroll.
Okay, thank you. And, um, I am going to turn back to the applicant and ask if you'd like to respond to all the comments we've heard. And, um, and then we do have some more questions. So, but first let's go to, uh, Mr. Gilde.
Sure. I mean, I had one of, um, I guess at the community board, the big issue is whether or not there's a need for this. You have a couple of letters in the record from the owners, you know, discussing that. Um, the rest of the block, if you go down the block has signs, do not trespass, do not come in on their gates. And I think there's clearly a need for it. The the board suggested, um, bright lights or alarms or the like instead of this, um, which we pointed out, um, neither is, is, well, neither one is very neighborhood friendly. Um, nor do either of them, nor are either of them allowed by code. We've investigated this about the properties. Um, there are no other, um, stoops or, uh, steps or entrances that are similar to this on the north side of the block. The entire north side of the block is gated. The entire north side of the block is gated, including entrances to the close. Um, the, the suggestion that the owners use their back door rather than their front door because people are camping out on the steps strikes me as a little bit disingenuous. And I, I also just want to say that if I weren't convinced that this design was really an appropriate design, I wouldn't have brought it to the, to the commission. I mean, I think it really does work. And it makes my heart sing. And that's, that's a hard thing. It's, I, you can't often say that about this sort of thing. So I hope that you'll take these owners at their, you know, uh, at their best. They've been, they're not particularly new owners. They've owned these buildings for 11 years. So they are neighbors. I hope you'll take them at their word that this is important. This is an expensive, difficult process. And, uh, they would not be going through this if they, if they weren't on need for it. So I would hope you would not focus on the issue of need and accept the owners at, at face value and focus on the architectural um, treatment of this, which I think merits approval.
Okay, thank you. And, uh, Commissioner Goldblum, I think you have a question or two?
Yeah, I did. Um, a couple of the people in, who offered testimony made a suggestion um, and made some observations about the, the nature of the, uh, fence that I wanted to just ask you more directly. Um, obviously the fence can be, you know, climbed over. It's not seven or eight feet tall. Um, so its, its function is to keep people from, I assume, sitting on the stoop or, you know, sitting on the flat part of the stoop. Um, could that be accomplished with a chain or with a lower fence?
Well, I don't think, I mean, I don't think a chain. I don't think a chain is appropriate anyway, but no, I'm not sure it could be accomplished. And I think this is, I mean, we considered lowering this fence to the level of Jason's um, fence. So that would be shorter than that. But it just, if you, if you look at it in a drawing, it doesn't, it just doesn't work right. I mean, that's why we did it this way. And I have to say that I, you know, I really do like the way this composition works. I think it tells you exactly what it's doing and what it's all about. And as to a practical matter, um, I can tell you that, um, when you call 311 or 911, if, um, they find somebody behind a closed fence, they will indeed treat it as trespassing. Whereas if there's no fence there, I can tell you based on experience. I'm also president of the Columbus Southern Business Improvement District, so I deal with these issues a lot, then they tend to treat this to somebody sleeping in a public place. So it really does help with enforcement.
Thank you.
Okay. And, and just to follow up on that question about lowering it. Um, and I know it's, this would be very awkward if they'd have to swing out, which may not be allowed under code. But if, did you look at putting it on the step so that it is maybe only as high as the adjacent?
I, I think if, if the commission felt that the fence, the gate in its current place and plan would read better, um, being low, lowered to the same height as the adjacent fence parallel to the building. I mean, we could certainly do that. I just didn't like the way it looked as well. But I think, you know, and we could draw it, um, as well. Take a look at it.
Okay. And if it were to sit on the bottom step, obviously there's operability issues with the swing, but would it be coplanar with the fences on either side? Or is it in a different plane there too?
It's pretty much, it's close to coplanar. If you go to the plan, you can take a look. It's close to coplanar the way it is. Um, if you keep flipping through, I think it's almost the last one.
I mean, it, it's awkward to put it on a step, I think, but it would.
Really, it doesn't really work on the step, frankly.
Yeah, it would, uh, it would at least lower it and you'd be able to see most of the door at.
Well, this is a very transparent gate. I can, I can. So there you can see that it is almost coplanar with the existing fence. And if you go back to the rendering, it, it's very hard to argue that this is obscuring any view of the, of the door of the fence. I mean, it's an open fence. And it's a fence that continues in exactly this design on the entire north side of West 20th Street. At the close and every place else.
Right. And this is the same design that goes in front of the church.
Right. Which is, has a very tall, very ugly gate. You know, every, every single opening into the close is gated.
Okay. All right. Any other questions? Okay. So commissioners, I am um, starting to unmute you all so we can move to our discussion. Oh, Commissioner Goldblum, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
And Commissioner Lutfi, would you second that motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
And the opposed? Okay. And I'm just noting for the record that Commissioner Bland is recused on this item and has not been present for the presentation or the discussion. Sorry. And, uh, so we'll, we'll, uh, begin our discussion now. We have, um, we've looked at the full block. Um, thank you, Abby, for sharing your screen and allowing us to look at Google Street View. Um, and understand that the north side of the street, uh, is all, uh, property that belonged to the geological, uh, sorry, the uh, General Theological Seminary. And the, uh, south side of the street has a variety of residential building types. Um, so this, you know, when we look at gates in front of buildings, um, at gates in front of buildings, at, at the steps, I think when we are looking at tall stoops, there is a real sense that those stoops should be open and that there's quite a distance to the entry. I think an entrance step is a, is kind of a different thing, and I think that this is not a rowhouse building, so I think one could think about it differently. We have approved some stoop gates on rowhouses with tall stoops where they have been a one-off and not part of a row or at the end of a row adjacent to a large building or a commercial thoroughfare. So we have done it in very limited instances on tall stoops, but again, I think that this building typology and step can be thought about differently if you choose to. And so the applicant has designed a fence, a gate that matches the adjacent fencing and, you know, we've had a lot of discussion about the streetscape at this point, and I, you know, I would also say that for our discussion on appropriateness, I know we've heard a lot of testimony about need, and that is not really part of our discussion, we don't make our findings based on need. And so whether one person feels something isn't safe and another person feels it is, is sort of outside of our purview. We look at the architectural appropriateness of the physical work, so we'll look at it in that context and we'll begin our discussion. Commissioner Chapin, would you like to start this one?
I'm a very mixed mind about this. I, I feel, I felt in looking at the gate that it was, from my point of view, the fact that it is matching the, the rest of the gate, it makes it very ornate and it's, it really seems to me a bit awkward. I actually began to think about the idea of having a chain as, you know, Michael asked about, which might not serve the needs of the owners, but or even two chains conceivably. Something that just didn't seem to be such a solid, you know, barrier, and yes, I, I do not think that it really, you know, it doesn't hide the building, let's put it that way, but it just doesn't, I don't feel very comfortable with the, with this approach, this where the gate is because of the necessity of how the steps are. So I'm, I'm not very comfortable with this, so I, I don't think I can approve it unfortunately.
Okay. Alright, thank you. Commissioner Goldblum?
Okay, thank you. This has been a very interesting morning. Now, in, in the spirit of Fred's conversations, they started with the previous project that we looked at, there's a direct connection between the two. And it touches on some very basic issues of preservation that perhaps are out of our scope for this relatively modest application, but are nevertheless relevant. And in, in the spirit of Fred's conversation this morning, I would, I would offer the following. There's a direct connection between what happened to the townhouse in the village and what's happening here. Homelessness, you know, is a result of there not being enough housing, and when you take, when you take two buildings that probably had eight units or twelve units in them as, as a combination, making it to one, one family house that in and of itself may even be occupied only seasonally is contributing to the homelessness problem in a direct measurable way. And there is some talk, there's lots of talk in, in the preservation world, to the extent that I'm, have access to it, about preservation of communities as opposed to buildings, or not as opposed to buildings, as, as an extension of buildings. And we talk, you know, we, we do talk about it sometimes, and, you know, it's worth thinking about, I think, as a commission. You know, how do, you know, how do, how do we address that, and you know, we, it's certainly not in our mandate and we can't do it here, and it's not appropriate to do so because it's not in our mandate, but it's certainly, there's a good argument for saying it should be in our mandate, and that, you know, the, the council and the mayor might think about, you know, there's more to preservation than the facades. That said, the, the fence here, I agree with Diana, that it's perhaps overly ornate and draws a little bit too much attention to itself as a decorative element with the scrollwork and the squiggly finials. I think that if a gate is necessary here, you know, we do, we do approve gates in, in equal, in much more pernicious locations on, on the Upper East Side where they really form a kind of barrier to a sense of the streetscape. I don't think that is the case here, so I think that relative to those very unfortunate fences, this, this is relatively modest, and I think if we were made a little bit more modest, either by lowering the, the top or lightening the pattern in some way, I think that it would, it would be an improvement and could be approved with those modifications.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Chen?
Yeah, very interesting discussion, Michael Goldblum, I, I wish Fred Bland is here to discuss as well. Yeah, well, what Fred, I mean, what Michael Goldblum pointed out is obviously not part of the LDC mandate, but it raises a very interesting question because we do know to preserve these structures, it requires human beings' efforts as well. And so this nation is short currently about five million unit of housing. And it's affecting Canada as well, and so it is a, another topic for another discussion. And I was going to ask the council, Mark, about, you know, historically, I noticed that, well, I've been here on the commission, I noticed on the Upper East Side, we do approve this type of gates. And is there any different standard that is applied to the Upper East Side than it is here's?
Well, I'll jump in, and I think, you know, well, Mark, you go ahead, I'll see if I want to add anything after you.
No, no, Sarah, I mean, I, I think that, I think the first thing we do is we look at things individually. And we decide on sort of the, you know, in that particular case, in that particular district, looking at both historic situations and historic changes that have happened over time, we look at the appropriateness of, of a fence or whatever. I think the commission has had the most difficulty on, you know, groups of rowhouses with stoops that, you know, are historically been open and where there's not that many that have been closed off, and that's, and those are the situations where the commission has looked at it, I think what the chair said in this case is this is not really a stoop as we have looked at it in different, you know, in those sort of cases where we have had a high degree of concern. And so the short answer is that we look at things sort of independently, and I think the, the Upper East Side has had a history of, A, they were, you know, sort of grander buildings with fences that, and many of them had them originally, and many of them were put them in, you know, historically, and so that's where we have looked and taken our cues from. So those don't have much applicability here, and our, and our sort of concern for, you know, real stoops and gates and stoops of long, you know, rows of, of rowhouses, it's also not applicable, so that's how I answer that question.
Yeah, and I would just say also that, you know, again, you know, we look at, is it part of, is it a part of a row, does that row have continuous stoops? Is there a rhythm and a pattern that the fence might be detracting from? And as Mark said, I think it's been most challenging in those cases with the, you know, historic high stoop and there's a row. But we have approved stoop gates on, not only in the Upper East Side, but other districts, including Greenwich Village just to the south, on stoop gates, because they're at the end of the row or they're near a commercial thoroughfare where there's a slightly different character, or, you know, because they're not part of a row. So, and again, again, you know, this, I think you can look at differently because it's a different typology.
Yeah, and in that regard, I agree with Michael Goldblum's comment about that, you know, I, I think, you know, the suggestion of chains or bright lights certainly is not appropriate or is, and the question then comes back is, the applicant made the statement that, that they, they took effort to design this thing so that it's minimal intrusion with only two posts going into the steps. And can we make it a, a, a limited term? Given hopefully the homeless crisis passes over, but, you know, you know, the, the, I, I do agree that, you know, this, this is, is well fought out, and, and I think it is, you know, with minimal intrusion into the, but I defer to the, the majority to see what, what the commission thinks. And if indeed, if indeed there's a gate warrant here, then maybe you want to simplify it even, but Michael Goldblum.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Latfi?
Somehow lost my, it doesn't matter. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Because I don't have the full screen for some reason or other. Okay, so, thanks Michael and Wellington for bringing up that discussion, it's an important one. I think I'm just going to narrow more now, a little, be a little more focused on the appropriateness of this fence. I do want to say a lot of times on the Upper East Side, applicants are applying for fences that are very tall, and we are constantly lowering them. This block has a lot of gated homes and some, and, and some institutions, and I think that it's important to take note of that, and I can accept the fact that it's a common condition on this block, and I can appreciate the concerns of the residents in, in these buildings and their desire to address them in some way. Whether or not it's going to be helpful is, is another matter. I do think that the way it's been designed is pretty sensitive, and it's, it doesn't do anything to negatively impact the architecture of the building, and it is fairly transparent and minimal. I don't think it's very high, and I, I don't think it makes sense to be lower. I, I do want to say that the way most of these other fences are installed, and I, and this is my only question about what this effectiveness, is that they're really at the front of, you know, they're closer to the front of the property, and so the steps are set back a little bit, it's a different configuration, I appreciate that, but still might get people sitting on these steps because the fence is actually up, you know, a step and a half. So I'm just going to raise that, but I can support this application for the reasons said.
Thank you. Commissioner Jefferson?
Well, the existing elements, the step, the doorway and the surrounding ornament is quite beautiful. This is a unique, I, I don't think I've seen too many places like this in New York, particularly with the steps stepping out into the public zone, and, and it's, the uniqueness of it should be kept, in my view. I think the fence is nicely designed, it's, it's subtle, has subtle curves, it's nicely done, but I don't think it's appropriate here. Though I can approve it, cannot.
Thank you. Commissioner Gustafson?
Yeah, I, I I will ignore all the peripheral comments on social justice. The, we're here to decide whether this is appropriate under the standards that we're given, and there are two things I look at there, one is the existing block context, and we saw that there are gated stoops in this, on this block, numerous, and also whether it obstructs or distracts the visibility of the details in the front of the doorway and whether it detracts from the overall design of the building, and I think this does not. The fact that it is that a, a step lower gives complete visibility, as you can see in the rendering that we're looking at right here in front of us. So I think it's appropriate as is.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Shamir Barron?
Thanks. I found the testimony compelling in, in that it made a case for, for, for why this, you know, from the perspective of the neighborhood and the, the residents, sort of, that it feels not effective, that it feels out of place, and I, I just think that the weight of that testimony matters. So I, I, I do take it into account. I also think that a some kind of a chain would have achieved the same result and would, in my mind, be more appropriate. However, I actually agree with other, some others that this does not, the, what is being proposed does not detract from our ability to read the building beyond, to understand what was historically there, it doesn't detract. And so I have to say that while it is not, in my mind, the most appropriate, it is not inappropriate, and so I can approve it.
Okay, thank you. And Commissioner Holfer Smith, I'm not sure if you were here for enough of this.
Yeah, I didn't hear any of the testimony or the presentation, so I, I think I should, should abstain, yeah.
Okay. Alright, so, and I think, you know, I also, I mean, I, I know this is something that we think about a lot, and, and obviously the neighbors have thought about it a lot as well and care deeply about their street. But I do think for us, from my, from my opinion, that this stoop is, this entry step really, an entry sequence is really different than the, you know, rhythm of high stoops at rowhouses that you find on many rowhouse blocks, and that thinking about this typology differently is consistent with the stoop gates that we have approved in other instances where the context is different and/or the end or the building typology or streetscape is different. And so I think because of the many fences on this street, but particularly because this is on the side of the former seminary and that much of this street, if not all of it, is either walled or gated. And, and the fact that this is a low and transparent fence and doesn't detract from the door, doors around, I could go approve this as well, so I think there might be six of us who would approve it if the design were simplified even further and the, and the height, overall height of it being looked at, and maybe the finials at the top rail as Commissioner Goldblum suggested. So, why don't I go ahead and make a motion to follow those suggestions made by the commissioners who felt they could approve it with some lowering and simplification, and we'll do a vote and see where we are. Okay, so in the matter of, I'll have to do three, I guess. In the matter of docket number, I wonder, Mark, can I read three docket numbers and sort of combine the findings into one?
Yes, because it's going to be the same finding for all of them.
Yeah, and the same building description, okay, great. So in the matter of docket numbers, two-two dash zero-seven-five-one-seven, two-two dash zero-seven-five-one-eight, and two-two dash zero-three-six-three-three, four-seventeen, four-nineteen and four-twenty-one, West Twentieth Street in the Chelsea Historic District. A freestanding faculty house built in eighteen ninety-two within an ensemble of English Gothic, English collegiate Gothic-style buildings built largely between eighteen eighty-three and nineteen oh-two, designed primarily by Charles Coolidge Hates. This is an application to install ironwork, and I note that the building style, scale, materials and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Chelsea Historic District. I recommend approval with modifications that the proposed work will not eliminate or damage any significant will not eliminate or damage any significant architectural features, that the design of the gate will relate to the details, materials, and finish of the adjacent historic ironwork, that the ironwork will be installed at the rebuilt brownstone step and will not impact historic fabric and is easily reversible, that the low and transparent nature of the iron gate, these low and wide entry steps, will not impede visibility of the historic details of the facade and areaway or detract from the overall design of the building, and that the work will not detract from the architectural or historic character of the building, the streetscape, or the Chelsea Historic District. And the streetscape, which features features other ironwork at steps and entries and areaways. And however, I do recommend that the applicant continue to work with the staff to simplify the gate, explore lowering it and simplifying the design to make it an even more transparent installation. And we'll go with Commissioner Gustafson. Would you second that motion?
Second.
All right, Mark, will you call the vote?
Chair Carroll?
Aye.
Commissioner Bland?
He's recused.
He's recused, sorry. Commissioner Shamir Baron?
Aye.
Commissioner Chapin?
Nay.
Commissioner Chen?
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum?
Aye.
Commissioner Gustafson?
Aye.
Commissioner Jefferson?
Nay.
Commissioner Luttrell?
Aye.
And Commissioner Holfer, and Holfer Smith, you're going to, you're going to.
I think I'm going to stand, yeah.
Okay, so it's six in favor, two opposed, and one in motion, then the motion passes.
It's approved. Please continue to work with the staff. And we are a little behind schedule, so we're going to break for lunch now. And we will return and do the final two items after lunch. So we'll come back at 1:20. So we'll ask all members of the public to voluntarily exit the meeting now so that you can easily get back in if you plan to return after the lunch break at 1:20. And commissioners, you just need to turn your audio and video off. We'll see you then. Thank you.
Sonia, we just cut the line.